What's gonna happen with them? I mean, they're gonna strike.
Yeah. Should have asked.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, all right. Yeah. We're. There's all the posts.
All right, ready to get started?
Yeah.
Okay, well, meeting to order. Seventy one. Awesome announcements. This meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV and recorded for rebroadcast on the local cable channels and on the internet. Meeting is also accessible by remote participation. Instructions are on the bottom of the agenda. Twenty twenty-three Summer Bandstand Concert Series, Thursday, six thirty. We have two left or one?
Uh, last one's better.
Last one's just be okay. Fall Special Town Meeting warrant closes on Tuesday, September fifth. Warrant articles to do with the clerk's office no later than Thursday, August thirty-first. Blank forms are available online. If you have any questions, please contact the town clerk's office. If there's any indication that you might want to have a warrant article on there, please talk to the town clerk and it's possible to put a place holdman if you're not sure. Calls for volunteers, we still have positions open. WWW dot Newbury, W Newbury dot org slash volunteer. Any committees you guys know that we need help on?
Oh, it's too big. It's not fine.
Oh, one, one, sorry. Any other ones? Right? Reminder to subscribe for email town agendas, news and announcements at WWW dot W Newbury dot org slash subscribe. So, regular business, our first item is a public hearing to consider proposed municipal energy aggregation plan. Hello Denise and Mark, welcome back.
Hello.
Thank you.
So we received a handful of comments and you've seen them all, right?
Yes.
Any other input, any responses you want to make publicly to the comments?
No, kind of what I call regular comments, what we normally see, none of them require any changes to the plan.
Yeah. A question I had with the recent investigation into the aggregation program, do you have any comments on that? Can you explain what that is maybe for people that aren't aware of it?
Absolutely, absolutely great, a great question. So the Department of Public Utilities has opened up a, and what I'll say, I'm gonna use their words. They're trying to streamline the process of municipal aggregation. As we had mentioned earlier, currently the department is struggling, I think on a whole bunch of fronts. But they're saying that if with these changes, they'll become more efficient and they'll start to put a time clock on themselves. Meaning if you use their form and content, if you will, they can get an order out to you in a hundred and twenty days or four months. If you file the old way, they can get something out to you in sixty, six months or a hundred and eighty days. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be frank, it's, it's completely disingenuous what they've done. All they've really done is taken all their bench orders and put them in a, all the things that we have in your plan. All we do is follow that. So they've taken their bench orders to the last twelve years or so, put them in this, in these guidelines and added a few more things that I believe handcuff municipalities. Colonial's goal is here to leave the power in this group's hands. That's what deregulation was supposed to do. And I believe this is just another step forward for them trying to re-regulate UniAg. How successful, how successful they're going to be? I really couldn't say right now. I know people, all the people that are involved in the process are not too happy. It's just more of the same, if you will. So I'm gonna give you an example, we use the exact same plan that was approved. Other than changes for the last fifteen years, it's a business, we want to do what works best. And every time we file a new plan, they have a couple of changes. So what these guidelines are is trying to solidify those changes so that you don't have the flexibility that you'd like moving forward. I'm hopeful that we're able to push back, but I should be, I should be frank again and say, our ability to push back against the department hasn't been very successful. So the only thing I will tell you is there is legislation in right now that would override these guidelines. So should the process not go well there, I think we'd focus on, on, on those, you know, on the legislative fix. So that you're able to make the decisions you should be able to make.
So this, this, whatever happens in this process, it won't impact West Newbury's?
So what Denise is trying to do is get your filing completed in. The bad news is, is they're saying it will be for all new filings and anyone that's even approved.
Okay.
So unfortunately, even if you're the city of Boston and you have a plan for the last two years, you'll be subject to these guidelines.
Okay. Rick, Chris, do you have any questions on this?
Well, with the conversation, you have to mention that we have the council review that document.
And yeah, so we did have K P Law review the document and I would say pretty minor changes.
Very much, just changing the authority for me to select board to town manager.
It's the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the changes are insignificant, a couple of modifications that shall be should.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
So Mark, is there, um, is, I mean, it struck me that there was some legitimacy. You know, I'm not a, I'm not a shill for the utility, you know, for any of us around utility. But, but it seemed to me that there was some legitimacy to the utility wanting to have advanced notice of, of the participants, you know, what they're gonna have a participation in their basic service. Because they, as I understand, and maybe this is incorrect, they do have to make commitments based on essentially six months advanced notice. And, and, and if they don't know what that demand is, then what they have to do is sort of establish a greater supply than they actually will need, you know, greater, greater availability than they'll actually need. Or if they undershoot, then they'll pay premium cost for the energy to fill, to fill the deficit. And, and you know, that seems legitimate to me, but if that's not correct, tell me, tell me, you know, explain why not.
Yeah, so technically the premium you're talking about is correct, sir, make no mistake, but it doesn't actually work that way. They, the, the utilities just go out and procure energy on your behalf. The risk is borne by the wholesaler. But the wholesaler is going to say, hey, I have to make sure if I'm buying expensive winter power and I don't know what my load is, I more than cover it. Because there's no risk to the utility in the, in the RFP process, right? They say you're gonna serve whatever customers are in, in our basic service. They agree to it, they've been doing it for twenty, the last twenty-five years, no problem. Now, I'm going to, I'm gonna take the other side, right? So I'm just saying to you is, for the last ten years, the writing has been on the wall that, you know, there's less and less basic service. And here we are, the department just in twenty twenty-three opens an order addressing basic service. Again, they're reactive, not proactive. This is the problem with our regulators. We clearly need to change basic service, but that does not mean, and I mean this honestly, I don't want that to hinder your, your place in the marketplace. Meaning you're making a decision, right? Basic service is set up to move people that show what the short-term risks are in the market and move them to competitive supply. It's not to protect the basic service customer. It is doing just that and lots of people are moving to municipal aggregation and other, and other venues that are out there. That, that is what is supposed to happen. Now, don't get me wrong, I think there are lots of better ways to procure basic service than they're currently doing. And they're being discussed in a docket currently. Unfortunately, our regulators are looking in a rearview mirror rather than out at the road. And they're reacting to something that they should have done five years ago. So again, they're not buying power, it's the wholesaler that says, hey, I'm at risk, I need to put a premium on it. But if they, if they were paying attention to the marketplace at any time in the last five to eight years, they should have seen this coming quite some time ago. That, I mean, we've been talking about it since, oh, two thousand and four, two thousand and five?
Okay, so, so in this case, it's, it's really the regulators who are the problem, which I kind of suspect that's, okay, so it's not, the, this isn't, this isn't an issue of the utilities not responding, it's more an issue of the regulators who, who, to go back to the word shill I used earlier, perhaps are utility shills.
Well, and I want to say this, the utilities only do what is prescribed by the department. They, they have a monopoly and they can, and they'll only do what the DPU tells them to do. So they'll never bear off that ever, otherwise it's not recoverable.
Yeah. Chip, do you have anything you want to add or? Sorry, I put you on the spot.
No, thank you. No, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, so Angus, do we need a motion on this or this is gonna be a warrant article, right?
No.
That's what's in the packet.
No.
It's an article request form in the packet.
Oh, that's the old one. That, that was just for background, that, that was the form that town meeting actually approved last fall.
Right.
To authorize the select board to do this.
Okay, so then we need to.
So yeah, yeah, so it is board's vote and.
So the motion would be what?
Uh, to, uh, to endorse the aggregation plan, perhaps subject to the changes town council recommended. Is that the right form of motion, Mark and Denise?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I make a motion that we endorse the aggregation plan, including the recommendations that the town council would make.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, bye-bye.
Thanks for the motion, thanks.
The next item is a select board review of committee's charges and function, investment policy committee. Let's see, Chris Wild is here, hi Chris.
Hey everyone.
How are you?
Good.
So, we're gonna just go through and ask questions, do you have any comments or questions, Chris? All right, I, um, I just wanted to note on the current membership of officers noted, it says here that there's a representative of the finance committee in the select board that attend meetings. That kind of suggests that they're not full members. So I would just like to reiterate that it's a five-member committee and the select board and committee member are full standing members. Do you have anything, Rick, on the, the form, any questions?
None at all, couldn't make, couldn't pick up that.
Okay. Um, I guess the other thing that I would ask Chris is, um, you know, we had a couple Zoom calls with you and Lark, with the treasurer, the town manager, and also the auditor that, that works for the town. A lot of other towns, the investment policy committee doesn't monitor the performance of the funds other than the quarterly meeting, which is called for. So I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about that? I mean, there's some concern that there's too much involvement by the committee with, you know, the treasurer is trying to just let the investment manager do their work. And we're trying to figure out what is the appropriate level of involvement of the committee with the work of the manager in between quarterly meetings.
Sure. And, and just for background, I've been involved with the committee now for two terms, two, three-year terms, so six years of, of history with it, with it. And, you know, I, I think we've only really done what you just described, which is evaluate performance on a quarterly basis. And, you know, I think that there's, through various, you know, chair tenures, including my own, you know, there's been, if I had to be really accurate, I'd say it's probably three times a year, you know, and, and I think that there's an opportunity to be a bit more disciplined on, you know, the timing and cadence. But I don't think the committee's doing anything more than quarterly evaluation and, nor do I, I really think the desire is there. I, I think the challenge that the committee has had is just with the timeliness and quality of information relative to those quarterly checkpoints. And, and I think, you know, and Angus, you know, please correct me if I'm misstating here, but, but I don't think our involvement with the town treasurer has been any more than, than just those meetings and, you know, just the notes that come out of those. Now, we have separately been pushing for a review of the manager and, and, you know, whether you want to call it a request for bid or a request for proposal, uh, you know, to, to evaluate the options out there. And while we understand all the dynamics there, and that's not the purpose of this call, I think that's the only area where we've probably been more involved in just purely, you know, how is the manager done on a quarterly basis, are we getting what we need, et cetera?
Okay, so that's what you envision going forward, once a new manager is selected, to just let them run with it and then?
A hundred percent. That, that's, and, and I think we've made that pretty clear through the, you know, the IPS and the committee's role in it. And I think any other standing documents, I don't think the committee has any desire to, you know, weigh in further. Now, if the town requests our, our guidance and that has come up, you know, when, when the town treasurer identified some holdings that shouldn't have been in the portfolio, I think we've made ourselves available to, you know, react quickly. And, and should there be an event that the town requests input on, I think that the committee is more than happy to do that. But I, but I think as a standing, on a standing basis, it is, as you described, you know, kind of that quarterly process.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. You have any questions, Chris? That we've been at the first meeting. Let's see, so it sounds like from the last meeting, you have a plan for getting the RFP or whatever the, the approach is gonna be moving forward, right?
We do, yeah, I, I think, and it's not the RFP, I think we're, we're going down the, you know, request for bid, which, which puts it, you know, really price-based and, uh, and I, we also understand that the timing on that and where it fits with other town business. So, you know, I, I don't sense that this is something that's happening in the next, you know, forty-five days. But I think us being ready on that is, and, and working through Caitlin, I think we all are straightforward as to what we're doing there.
Anything for the add?
No, I would just say that I think this questionnaire form has been really helpful. It's the, while the charge of the investment policy committee was restated most recently when the investment policy statement was amended in twenty twenty, the language of that charge goes back to twenty thirteen. So this questionnaire is nice to kind of both validate and kind of bring that into the current, which I think is helpful.
So Chris, with the idea of me to go back to the twenty twenty statement and update that, I think that's hard.
It was, it should be updated annually, I think, as we, and, and, you know, as part of our standing meetings, one of the things that at least I always do ahead of it to prepare is to evaluate the, the statement and then the current positioning of accounts and where are we relative? Just so we, you know, if, if we're getting close to some of the, the limits that are prescribed in that, you know. So I think we do review it pretty frequently, but I think, you know, as it relates to some of, you know, any of the language that could be theoretically updated on a more frequent basis, you know, we, we should go back to that and we should have a standing, you know, whether it's the first quarterly meeting in the year, whatever the case, it should be, you know, something that's just routine.
Yeah, okay. I think the only other thing that I would add is there's been a lot of discussion about open meeting law. So I just want to reemphasize that any discussion has to take place in a public meeting. So you can't email Lark and he can't email Gene, that's still a violation because the three of you are warm now, right? So, and especially with the two new members, I think it'd be good to, you know, have everything discussed in a meeting when everybody's there, so.
Yeah, that's, I, I think we, we hopefully squash that at the meeting. Now, you know, I think some of the things we brought up, you deal, you know, Wendy, you brought it up very specifically that you guys deal with it all the time on your three-person committee. And it's just a fact of life and, you know, I, I don't think that there's any desire to find ways around it or have anything, you know. We, we like the aspect of it. I think we had challenges in the past and no one that currently is on the committee, but with other members of the five-person committee where, you know, sometimes things did fly through email and it was just more the headaches around that. But I, I don't think that's an issue going forward.
Okay, I think we just need to remind every committee that we have this discussion, we need to remind about open meeting law because it is a hassle, but it's necessary.
It's important, I understand.
Um, any other questions? We good on this? Okay, thank you for your input on this. And our next item is to reappoint you to the investment policy committee.
I would move that we reappoint Chris Wild to the investment policy committee for a term running through, pre- your term, the credit.
Yes.
Through, um, June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate your work on this and joining us tonight.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Yeah, have a good night.
All right, you, you as well, thank you.
All right, I M D, you were, you were on draft solar feasibility study. So is one of you gonna do kind of an overview?
Yeah, I think Chip is gonna do a, a little quick discussion and then I have a few comments.
All right, so the report assesses the feasibility of the solar projects at a list of sites, owned by the town and the housing authority, provides guidance on some general considerations for all the projects and details about pluses and minuses of each site. Generally, the economics seem to favor a power purchase agreement approach versus direct ownership of systems by the town. Packing lock canopy systems are more expensive to build than the roof or ground-mounted systems, but they may be eligible for additional state incentives that could make it worth pursuing that kind of project. Most of the town buildings run on two hundred eight-volt power from the utility, but solar equipment delivers power at four hundred eighty volts. So, you know, we'll need transformers to step down the voltage on any of these projects. There's a financial information table summarizing, you know, the breach project, the size and annual output of the system, estimated costs and financial returns in year one and over a twenty-year period. The consultants don't rank the sites as more or less desirable for development. Instead, they recommend that the town decide which sites to select for further analysis. Some of the relevant factors include plans for future uses at some of the sites, conservation restrictions that may apply, and the presence of a septic system at one site, we have realized. So we may want to have more discussion in the committee about power purchase agreements versus direct ownership, so we may have another discussion about that. And I think Rick now has some other thoughts.
So, you know, as Chip just said as he finished, you know, the, the issue of whether we use a power purchase agreement, you also refer to as PPA. And that's, I guess, you know, typically that's the phrase used, it's just a PPA. So PPA versus direct ownership. In discussion in the Energy Sustainability Committee, in, you know, earlier, earlier than months ago, the impression was that PPAs had become sort of unfavorable, you know, the, the system that's installed over by May, by Page School, you know, we refer to it as the Main Street Solar Installation, is a PPA and that's been great, you know, the town has done very well with that. And, you know, in terms of, of, you know, financially. And, you know, and we're using the energy which, although we're not, not following individual electrons, essentially, you know, the town is largely being powered by renewable energy. The town, the town is in the municipalities, municipalities, facilities. So, so yes, we have to re-review what really is gonna make sense. And ultimately, I don't think until we have a particular, pick a particular site that we want to pursue and, and, and talk with vendors about that specific site, that we're gonna know what really makes sense. Because it's a, it's a market that changes with time. And, and, you know, the incentives have changed dramatically since the Main Street Solar Project was built seven or eight years ago. So it seems the installation that, when, when we do get to that point, it seems that the installation should be considered first, or the potential ground mounted rooftop installations, the ground mounted and rooftop installations in the DPW area near Pipe State Hill, or on Pipe State Hill. That property is owned and completely controlled by the town with no conservation restriction for that portion of, of the, of the property. And the existing electrical service to facility seems to be a logical interconnection point with the utility. The small existing installation at the site already provides roughly a third of the facility's annual energy electrical usage. So any additional solar PV installation would likely provide excess generation that would have to be virtually net metered to other, to some other town-owned facility. But that, that's doable. And all other proposed sites get more complicated. Any solar PV projects planned in the municipal campus area, which includes the town offices, this building, the annex, the senior housing and the public safety complex, should look at the entire area holistically, integrating solar generation with an energy storage capacity in a microgrid serving all four campus facilities, and possibly also leveraging the existing public safety complex generator as additional backup. Over the long term, meaning twenty-five years plus, this fossil fuel power generator may no longer be a viable component. It might make sense to review the microgrid feasibility report done several years ago. Given the goal of twenty fifty for net zero greenhouse gases, the holistic approach should begin with an initial study on optimizing the building envelope efficiency for all conditioned structures, followed by considering complete electrification of the campus, including transition to heat pumps, either air source or ground source, and serving both heating and cooling needs. This will be a major project for the town and better to begin thinking about it sooner than later. We've known vulnerability, we have known vulnerabilities now. Regarding the potential installation on the field behind Page School, which is the logical energy off-taker for any solar installation at that site, any definitive consideration should wait for completion of the facility assessment currently underway and subsequent decisions made by the town. And subsequent decisions made by the town based on the final result, the resulting final report. Um, as rightly noted in the conservation agent's comments, use of that site, meaning the, the, the field behind Page School. Uh, might also remove all of a couple of mature trees, uh, which is generally to be avoided, but, um. Which are standalone, those two trees are, are standalone trees and already at relatively high risk of loss to high wind events. So, um. You know, it's just another complication for that site. Um, when considering design and installation of solar facilities, it's important to consider potential secondary benefits besides the ener- energy generation capacity. Uh, for solar campuses, given appropriate design and a robust structure, snow climbing needs can be reduced. And an existing exposed parking lot can be upgraded to a precipitation protected and sun shaded space. Uh, ground mounted solar installations in open fields, non productive agriculture, such as behind Page School or either the north or south Dunn Field. Present an opportunity to provide pollinator habitat between the arrays through selection of an appropriate native plant mix. Um, and additionally, a necessary mowing, mowing maintenance plan will inherently control invasive plant growth as a side benefit. Essentially turning a current cost into a revenue enhancing benefit. So, you know, it's not, the report that we had was sort of an overview of, or the report that was done is sort of an overview of, you know, potential sites. Um, clearly there's nothing conclusive here at this point and. You know, I, I think we, we need to pick a spot and start at one place. Um, and, you know, that place might be, um, up at the DPW site.
So is that the plan for the committee to, to pick a spot and start it? Or what's the next step?
We, we haven't discussed that as, as a plan, but yeah, we, we need to, you know, we need to sort of. Yeah, exactly. Home in on, on, on one place, one spot, um. You know, but reflecting back to what I said sort of midway through that, um, you know, this municipal campus, I think we should look at this. But look at it holistically and, and, um, you know, there are a million projects. This is a long term project. It's not a one year project. It's, you know, a, a five year project, um. But until we start it, we're gonna get nowhere with that.
So, and this is available on the website?
It sure is.
Is it, is it a project page or just under?
I don't think they set up a project page.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The, it is not on the project page or it's on.
On committee's website.
Yeah, yeah, we should do that usually, usually enough, yeah.
All right, Chris, did you have any questions or input on this? I see red. I know you do.
It's just the kind of choice these days. Yeah, first question because you were talking about, um, the DPW and Pipe State. And I think it shows the canopies in the parking area. There is a conservation restriction on Pipe State. The DPW was deliberately cut out from that component. So that's separate. You might wanna check the rest of Pipe State, I believe, the structures on, so I don't know.
So what I was referring to were the, there were three different, um, elements on Pipe State that were, that were looked at. One of them was the, um, rooftop of the salt shed.
Yeah, that's fine.
The, 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 the other one was, um, within the DPW area, a line along the boundary. With the area where there is a CR. So within the DPW area, there is no restriction. Restrictions are practical restrictions for functional, functioning of the.
Look like the parking out by the ball field.
And, 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 and yeah, and that, and that's the third area and that, that area we recognized from the outset, that's. That's a complicated area for a number of reasons, not least of which is the CR. And, and, and we would have to negotiate with Greenbelt because they hold a CR. And, and, and. Okay, so I'm not sure how the state fits in there, but.
They didn't legislate, we were told when you put this on at the time, that's all I recall.
Right, yeah, no, no, that, and that's a complicated one. And, you know, it was, it was pointed out by, you know, by a resident that that was maybe a spot to look at. And, um, it didn't seem unrealistic to, to look at it, um, and understand, you know, what are, what is. What is the energy production potential and, um, and at some point perhaps it's worth. Following through as, you know, as, as we, um, when and if we decide we wanna produce more energy.
I'm just saying, wait, wait, now the, yeah, the simple ones, the DPW components. And so relative to the whole property, the Dunn property. When I read the conservation office's things, I felt like, can't do what's there, what ones are missed and that. The other thing to consider on Dunn. We bought it without a plant specific use.
Yeah.
And then Tracy went and got a grant for one point seven five from the state. We might wanna, I don't know if there's any conditions associated with that.
Yeah.
The only reason I say that is when we dredged Mill Pond many years ago, we took eight hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. And I found out a couple of years later, there was restrictions on the crops that you could then plant on the hill. You couldn't have row crops, they had to be cover crops. So, and nobody knew that.
Yeah.
So. I just don't want you to stop moving with the Dunn property, which I think is a great location.
Yeah.
And find out there's some.
Yeah, 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 clearly, you know, restrictions on all pieces of property would have to be. Be looked at prior to doing anything and then.
You know, the last one is whether the future option on the property and the Page School and sort of bit me because. Between Page and Dunn, we don't know what's happening.
Yep.
The school, so it's too. But yeah, TPW is a great location. I like the visible, because you could. This would be one I would be looking at. I know it's a lot more complex.
Right, it, it is. You know. Well, I use the word, well, you need to look at the entire site and understand all needs on the site and all opportunities on the site. Um, and, and, you know, there are, there are multiple opportunities, um, and, um. But you, you can, you know, you can kind of unintentionally tie your hands behind your back by doing things in the wrong sequence.
Well, it would be a phased project, I would assume because it'd be so long.
So if, if you focus on one, flushing that out, um, as time goes by, will. The feasibility of those others change other than the cost of power? Jeremy, will this feasibility study be good for the next ten years in terms of the program?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I think it will, but, um, you know, changes. Say, looking at the municipal campus, um. As, you know, Chris used the word, you know, you gotta do things sequentially, um, um, and, and, um. Or in stages, I think he said, you know, you, you, you don't. Certain, you wanna do certain things before you do other things. You could, you could do it other ways, but it wouldn't make as much sense. Um, and, and, you know, you, you wanna in the end, uh, end up with an optimized system. Um, and so you have to really think through what is my process, you know, what, what am I trying to change? Um, and what's the right sequence to do this? And, and, uh, um, you know, you don't want to. Put. More capacity for heating and cooling than the buildings would need, you know, that's a smoke, the simplest thing, if you first you make your buildings as efficient as possible. Uh, before you change the heating or cooling systems because you don't wanna put on a, uh, more capacity. You know, put in a new system with more capacity than, than the building is gonna need after it's actually been improved. You know, that's the easiest one to, most obvious.
So is the committee planning on doing any kind of presentation at town meeting or a report since this was funded by?
Um. I think the committee plans to, in going forward, every town meeting, um, doing a report of some kind. Yeah, and this I'm sure will be, I, I can't speak for exactly what the committee will decide to do, but I expect that this will be referred to. Um, and, and, um. You know, and, you know, there's a certain amount of methane that needs to start happening on a regular basis. You know, to get everybody's, everybody on board with what we have to go, you know, I mean, we, you know, we have a, um. We've got serious problems going on. I don't mean just in West Newbury, I mean, on a planetary basis and every little piece. Every, every little entity needs to do its part. Um, so West Newbury is a little entity and we need to do our part, um, and, um. Everybody needs to be on board to get that done. Elaine, okay.
A question about notifying the housing authority. Is there any, uh, has the housing authority. Received this port? Should we be reaching out to them or is that happening otherwise in the town structure? Where two of us, locations, two of the projects were on their property.
No, it hasn't been tested though.
And yeah, that's a real good question for, uh, Chip. And then, you know, the question is, do we. If, if, if we reach out to the housing authority now, then they could do their own thing. And it wouldn't be a holistic look at the entire campus. Um, and maybe that's what ought to happen, you know, maybe the housing authority should, should address their immediate need. And, and, um, you know, a few years from now, when we get around to dealing with the whole campus. Then figure out if there's a way to integrate what they've done, um, you know, I, I think the housing authority. Could see financial benefit in, in putting solar on their facilities, um. And maybe they put battery backup in to, in order to support the basic needs of, um. Of, of, of their residents, um, you know, there is a, a known. Hole right now in that if, when, when the power goes down, there are people in the housing authority who are dependent for life support stuff. On power. And if the power goes down, they have a problem. You know, may, maybe not an immediate problem, you know, this minute, but they have a problem. And, and, uh, so the housing authority for years has wanted to put a generator in. Um, but at this point in time, you know, putting a generator is just digging our hole deeper. Um, as far as becoming more and more fossil fuel dependent. And, and that's why. You know, the issue of looking at, you know, of a, uh, an overall view of, of the entire campus and figuring out how we move forward.
The generator, they just sort of. Probes me and my mother when I was on oxygen and then placing on her power belt, I have to bring over and, because we had a generator, so. I know it's not the direction I wanna go, but I'm living out that kind of like to see a generator just in case my equipment went out, you know.
So this is something maybe the committee can reach out to the housing authority?
Um, yeah, we could, but, uh. Yeah, well, but, but no, also. It seemed inappropriate for the committee to reach out to the housing authority without consulting with a select board first, so. Um.
I would say whatever the committee feels like is the appropriate sequence, so, I mean, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, so, so, um, I mean, Chip, I, I think we, you know, the committee could do that, could reach out to the, um, to the housing authority.
Um, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Do you see any issues?
Uh, no, I, I, I agree with what Rick said, that I think it was important to present this tonight and have the board discuss next steps. But if that's, yeah, if that's, um, I think making them aware of it is, is very important.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you both for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chip.
All right. Item E, review updated draft in the line of the board of water officials regarding use of arbor plants. So this.
I would know, we do have a couple of other, uh, you know, we have Fred and Graham here. I don't know if we can pick things out of order or just keep, keep with the agenda.
Um. Yeah, I guess we could do that. We don't have anybody else for other items. Um, all right, so let's jump into item G, discussion of proposal for follow up of, uh, evaluation of ash trees.
All right, so, uh, this was talked about at the last meeting and, uh. Seemed like the board was very supportive of going forward with getting, uh, with looking at a follow up evaluation of the hundred and seventy seven trees. That were treated to see which ones would benefit from additional treatment next year. Uh, and, uh, we did get a price quote from Bartlett. Uh, it was a bit higher than, uh, we expected, so I followed up with them. I had a conversation and they, they, uh, basically said, based on the, uh, scope of work and. Um, the need to do things to a certain level of quality, that takes a certain amount of time, the B basically is what it is, so. Uh, while I think we all agree the work is within the scope of the inoculation program that now being funded. And it's within the amount of funding that was available. I, uh, we thought it was good to bring it back to the board just to make sure before we. Uh, decide whether to go forward with that or not, that you're, uh, comfortable with the amount of money.
Did, did you, um, did you hear back, um, with any explanation of?
Not with any detail. I had a phone conversation and, and, uh, basically he said, uh.
I have your posted.
Yeah.
Time, quality of work, liability.
Yeah.
I mean, I, this was so much higher than what we were kind of discussing that I just felt like we should revisit it. I had a couple of questions on the proposal under scope of work. Says inventory trees up to but not exceeding a quantity of hundred seventy seven. This is on page, uh, two or four. That seems kind of squishy and then the next sentence, it talks about groups of trees will be considered as one, so. I'm not, it seems like the cost is based on a hundred seventy seven trees, but perhaps it's gonna be less than that. I don't know, the, the, the nine thousand is suspiciously under ten thousand, so I just wanna feel more confident in the number. Fred, do you have any insight on the, um, the cost for this?
No, uh, not really, other than. If you recall the original, um. Survey of four hundred and whatever it was, seventy or twenty nine trees or whatever that was, that was like thirty two thousand dollars. So, we're dealing with a third of that. So. You, you know, it, it's not. If you just do the same math, you come in, you know, around ten K. I think the issue here is that. It's not just visiting the trees, but it's having a professional arborist do an assessment of. How much canopy is left and deciding what. A- and whether there are other criteria and then deciding what category to put that in. It's, it's a professional judgment. It's not something that is, uh, it's not tremendously difficult. But it, it does require an experienced eye, so, you know, but other than saying what I just said, I don't really. Know how they priced it at all, um.
I mean, I was thinking that, you know, I understand about a third, but some of that work's already been done now. The trees have been identified and located and mapped. And so it shouldn't be the same, it shouldn't be proportional, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't know, Chris, what are your thoughts?
The first thing we're all neglecting to say is Fred's backdrop is magnificent. Yeah, I think, you know, Bartlett probably saw that we had some money left over and it's under the ten, but. We, or I was anticipating at some point we would fund an evaluation anyway, so the money is there. It's again, wasn't I like to pay, but I'd rather just have it done so we know where we're at.
So there were fifty bucks a tree.
Okay.
Yeah, fifty one.
What was the number?
The fifty bucks a tree?
Yeah, it's nine thousand seventy five dollars divided by one seventy seven.
Is fifty bucks?
Yeah, fifty one dollars and twenty seven.
Up to the group and then it's.
Yeah, what, what, so. But you get an answer to. Why are they grouping trees?
Well, you know, actually, I, I think if we were to, I, I can sort of recall the reference to grouping.
The first.
Maybe in the study, I'm not sure, but it may have been, there may have been a reference to that in the original study that, you know, that's taxing my mental.
At this point, I'd want each specific tree enumerated.
Yeah, I know, it's my good.
Yeah, yeah, white, I mean, it's.
Well, I, so, okay, so I, so I have, I'll use something unfamiliar with. I have within my yard, you know, on, on my property. I have a couple of places where there are groupings of ash trees where, and within a six or eight foot radius. There's probably a dozen stems, each one of which is. It will somewhere between four inches and sixteen inches in diameter.
Same thing.
You know, and, and, uh, so.
But I'm still looking at each individual, trust me, when I'm deciding whether to cut or continue treating. I'm looking at the individuals. The grouping thing, I think, makes sense to them, but maybe not to us. I, I, they would have to explain whether. If you got three stems coming and that's a grouping, whether if one contracted, you're looking to save the other two. And that's, that's.
Yeah, so, so. Sometimes. You're not sure what.
I mean, I. The grouping that they talk about could be the, I don't know what it is. The grouping could be talked about. Uh, the four groups that they, that they analyzed in their first study, but, uh, you know. At this point, either you go forward or you. Uh, you know, at this point, either you go forward or you or not, or go out for another bid, I mean, you can, you can, um. Fire it all you want, but. Uh, it's, you know, either you want the assessment or you don't, and if you think it's too high, then go out for another bid.
Do we have time to get another bid, Fred?
Uh. Well, the optimum time, uh, to do this follow up assessment. Is this fall before the leaves fall. Especially when they turn color, because the ash trees, you can see them fairly visibly. Uh, but they know where the location is, so. I would say you've got a month and a half, maybe. Um, would be would be the best, would be the ideal time, um. So, I don't know how the contracting mechanisms work and what speed they can do.
Yeah, and for a new vendor to come in, it's gonna take them longer than, I guess, I object to this lump sum with no explanation, I think. Going, you know, our procurement procedures have to be, you know, we're working on changing them, but. Um, I just, I also object to them not wanting to engage in a conversation about how they came up with the number, I think that's a disservice of the town.
But in the same regard, their original number to do the treatment came in significantly lower than anticipated, so when you couple the two together. We still have a financial benefit, to go to find somebody else to do another bid right now. They they already have the. I think it's. It's gotta be done.
Again, I would I would just off of this. I think you're fine going forward with the same people, the price that Rick quoted. Because it is an arborist, I would just wanna know that you're getting it. Still down to its essence of individual trees. However, their stem or whatever, that's just squishy language.
Yeah, I think.
Certainly, it's capable of of getting it resolved as to what they need and whether you're gonna end up. And they have language in here, seems to go specifically to tree, one seventy seven. But then they introduce this other concept of, that we don't understand, we clearly don't.
It might be a carryover from the original.
It might just be a carry, they might say strike that, that's not, yeah, right.
Fred, is that something you could follow up with them and just clarify?
I cannot, that's not in my purview, I'm sorry, that's Angus's purview.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, how's that?
Great.
Make a motion that we accept Bartlett's. Tree experts quote to do the evaluation but the sum of nine thousand seventy five dollars contingent on. Specifically to the hundred and seventy seven trees are treated.
Second, further discussion?
When you say specifically to the hundred and seventy seven, so do we want to to address the question of grouping? Because it seems like that's kind of a stickler, that the.
If you've got a grouping and it's two that are coming out, the number that is tree number forty two, that's it, we pay, we own a hundred and seventy seven we treated.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we want an assessment of all hundred seventy seven trees that are treated.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure how to interpret that, but if.
That addresses my concern.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any further discussion? On favor? All right, thank you, Fred.
Well, Fred.
Thank you very much.
All right, Graham, we used to, Lark, we have finished with the Investment Policy Committee, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I I don't know what the findings of the board were, uh, so I I'm sorry I'm late. Uh. Uh, I can catch up, I I when I see the minutes.
Okay, we just talked with Chris, just general conversation about the answers, um, it was all good, and then we reappointed Chris. Uh, to the committee for three years.
Great.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Other items you pointed out were that, uh, a, uh, member of the Select Board and a member of the FINCOM are in fact full members. On on the, um, Investment Policy Committee and also just the issue. Um, adherence to open meeting law and, you know, not having offline comments. That that, um, that weren't part of the posted meeting.
Got it, thank you guys.
All right.
Thanks for having me, Clark.
Uh, is Graham still there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, I am.
All right, hey, Graham. Ahead to item L. Discussion of process by which decisions are made regarding location, construction materials and parking on town owned land. So I guess, do you wanna get the backstory on that?
Uh, sure, so I'm just, uh, this is, uh, is is, you know, on the board, there's, uh, every time we acquire lands, there's, uh, follow up. Work that needs to be done, what does to do with trail, uh, layout, construction, uh, parking, uh, determining location. Layout, construction, if there's other things like fencing and and so forth, so. Uh, now that our conservation agent's at a full time role and is, uh, attending all the meetings of the Open Space Committee as well as some meetings of. Milpon Committee and is involved in communications with a lot of other groups like ACTA. Uh, we're, um, feeling that it would be. It way, well, and so just to finish, so there's a lot of loose ends on land that's been acquired over the last four or five years. As well as other land that's not technically been acquired, but like the Weston Greenway where it's within. Uh, extension of the right away, there's home by the Select Board, but others that come to mind, the Artichoke River Woods, as you know, where. Work with, uh, where Greenbelt's working, has recently gotten that permitted to do some house, house group parking and, uh, trails. Uh, the partner required was required to go to Concom, uh, that involved, uh. A number of correspondences and a site visit, including me and Michelle, uh, there was other, uh. If not open questions, at least, uh, additional, uh, you know, on the ground work as well as permitting needed for the Coffin Street lands. With the access from Cortland Lane as well as, uh, other, uh, with Saddle Brook, obviously, there's, uh. Uh, expectation of a trail network as well as, you know, how that could tie in with the, uh. Uh, subdivision and the trail easement planning board required there, that I, you know, I'm trying to be, uh, you know, I wanna be a resource to Michelle and her. Role as, uh, you know, kind of a land agent, part of her responsibilities. And, um. I think we'd like to just try to get to where these questions are fleshed out in more detail earlier in the process and not. Uh, kind of straggling behind and, you know, I've been part of a lot of these land acquisitions and that's often not realistic. Because the the timeframe, things come together, it's often so short, but I do think it's gonna be really important to both, uh. Reaffirm as well as make clear broadly the role of the conservation agent in her land agent role. And being really the town's point person on a lot of these conversations, um. And, uh, I think we wanna, uh, you know, one thing that I think could be productive, Wendy and I talked about it, Michelle and I talked about for for. Several months, once the schedule is right, is to get a lot of the stakeholders together, at least the chairpersons. Uh, just so there's some alignment on how and when these decisions are made, so so just for instance, for instance, uh. You know, there's a lot of permitting implications for some of these things, especially to do with, uh, weapons crossings and things, and I know. Part of Michelle's interest is to make sure that those are fully understood and built into the advanced planning. Uh, so the commitments aren't made that that really aren't realistic, I understand it was a site visit a few weeks ago to do with a potential. Connection from the, uh, subdivision over Saddle Brook and, you know, Michelle's looking at that scene. You know, permitting, need for, you know, ANRAS, need for delineations, probable need for for engineering. Uh, for weapons crossings, but I I gather there's some. Uh, residents who would think it can be done a lot more simply than that, and we wanna avoid where there's, uh, kind of misunderstandings or. You know, a staff person who's who's, uh. You know, there to facilitate the help, like who has a regulatory job and and we don't rehearse that up as like the bad guy on. On just making sure things are done, uh, you know, by the book, so. Uh, so I just wanted, you know, she reached out to me, I'm a couple of steps removed from a lot of these meetings, because it, well, I'm I have some involvement with some of the. Land acquisition is often in support of the board, of the language CR. Generally, I'm not at the Open Space Committee meetings, so I just wanna make, I wanted to put this on the agenda, basically to raise the profile and, uh. I do think it would be helpful if, uh, whether the board or a designated of the board convened a. A huddle among the key, key people, not just including town committees, but also groups like ACTA. And I know Wendy, you have your own, obviously, perspective on this from the years and years you've been directly involved, so. Well, I don't know if I encapsulated things properly.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it would be good to have some procedure, I mean, the Select Board has a role because it's town property, the agent has a role. Through the conservation issues, uh, obviously, the Open Space Committee has a role in terms of establishing and maintaining trails, so. Um, I do think the outcome of this conversation. Should be a meeting with those interested parties just to talk about what makes them sense, and we don't wanna get in ACTA's way, but also they can't go on their own and just develop. Town, you know, trails on town land, so, um. But if if either of you have any input, uh, or. General reactions to how we should manage this, maybe we can talk about that for a few minutes before we. I mean, for Graham, do you have anything you wanna add to the conversation?
No, I mean, I would say that I think you kind of, uh, encapsulated pretty well, but, I mean, I think that it. There has to be some sort of, and, you know, for me, so much of this learning curve of learning some of these things, there is no protocol. Um, you know, some of these things I found out, I asked them the question, like, well, what is the process here? And they're like, well, there really isn't a process, so I think that, you know, it it would be great to have a process. And that way, it, I think it does two things, one, it stops anyone from stepping on anybody's toes, but also I think that it points the people that. Want, I mean, people that wanna be go-getters and go and do things, I don't wanna stifle that, but I also wanna make sure that we're pointing them in the right direction to get the outcome we're looking for, so. I think if there's a process, then this makes us a lot more streamlined as to, um, you know, getting these things accomplished.
I'm a little fuzzy on it because, uh, there's no background in the packet and we're just hearing this right now firsthand. So is the issue that people are going in and putting trails on lands once we acquire them, or?
No, no. So I think the assumption is, because, uh, for example, ACTA is a trail group, so, um. There's always just the assumption that they'll they'll put in the trail and not always the clear understanding that they need to talk with the Select Board, they need to talk with the Conservation Commission. So, um.
Is it just that there or is it down?
Um, I think it's typically ACTA, I mean, I think. Basically, he knows that there's a process, they have to work through the commission.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thing with the subdivision up, you know, off Main Street, up the road, the Deer Run subdivision is, uh. There's recorded trail, trail easements and part of the purpose of the site walk a few weeks ago, I think, was to kind of ground through that and make sure that where the trail easements were. Uh, laid out and in fact are recorded, one of those in fact are the the logical locations for the trails, including looking ahead to. Potential interconnections with Saddle Brook and obviously we've had, you know, a lot of staffing changes since that went through permitting. The town planner has turned over to conservation agent, I think a lot of that was permitted before she was here, so I think that's part of where. You know, if the if the planning board is working with an applicant to, um. Uh, you know, require trail easements, uh, as part of the development, I think with the staff we have now, it just in the. Based on the additional coordination that goes on, um, and and actually the actual staff people we have, the. Conservation agent and, you know, uh, the toxic building inspector, though he only comes into play if it's. If there's a designation involved, because that triggers the ADA compliance, but, um. We, you know, in instead, what what happened here is kind of the, the. You know, the current staff are looking at where the trail easements are laid out and and kind of after the back going and saying, is that actually where it makes sense? To put a trail, uh, and, uh. If it doesn't end up making sense, you know, that's gonna create a certain amount of work to work with the landowner, potentially change the location of the trail easement, so. Uh, we just wanna kind of, uh, make sure things are thought through. Kind of a.
These things, I would have thought they came under Open Space Committee and they would be looking at these things, I'm just so surprised.
Well, I mean, it came from the planning board.
Yes, I think that's where things have to start, with the with the planning board, but if if, when, when it. You know, there should, there should be, everybody should be in the conversation when the planning board is looking at something like a trailer, I mean, you look at. The one that Angus just referred to, you know, off of, um. Uh, what was the subdivision name?
Deer Run.
Yeah, Deer Run, uh, but but then, you know, he's gone over to, uh, Sullivan's Court, um. And, you know, between that and and, uh, and the, um.
Sullivan or, uh, wherever, river metal.
Right, in River Meadow, or 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 look at the trail easements over, um, on Dale, off of Daley Drive. I mean, all of those, and it's crazy that there were trail easements, but they were really a secondary consideration, there wasn't thorough. You know, process of of considering them, are are they in the right place? And have we thought through the details beforehand, and it would be so much easier if that were done beforehand, um, you know, think about how much time was wasted. Um, the one between Sullivan's Court and and River Meadow and 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 we're dead in the water and someday we'll turn around and revisit that when there's bandwidth, but. Um, or at least I hope we will, but but, um, there was a lot of, a lot of resources. Um, you know, and I mean, I was all gung ho for it, now I realize, I didn't realize, I think Angus saw what was coming. I didn't, didn't quite understand how 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 far down the rabbit hole we were gonna get before we decided. That it wasn't gonna happen right now.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, so for private developments, it definitely has to come from the planning board, and I can see now with the town planner that we have. Her reaching out to the conservation agent, going in the Open Space Committee, and that how it needs to happen at the beginning.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, but as as far as, you know, things that already exist. Uh, or or or, yeah, 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 or or, yeah, so, I I meant the conversational, sorry. You know, with a conversational recess about a part, about a property, yeah, they're. I I agree, I mean, everybody should be in one space together and and talk about it, um. Prior to moving, to anybody getting too far out in front.
Does that give you any feedback, Angus?
It it does, yeah, uh, and I think it it's also kind of, uh. With this, with the board's ongoing review of charge, you know, charges, I think when you get Open Space Committee in here, I think that's a good opportunity, but. And and, uh, Michelle has been talking with me about this for, you know, several months, because it's come up, uh, you know, a number of different specific instances. Where there's been questions about how the town wants it done, and there's a lot of voices in the town. And and so, you know, talking over with Wendy, we both felt, you know, if the Select Board is the owner of the land, it really needs to be the Select Board. Saying how and and, you know, how the trails would be configured and where the park would be and so forth, that this. Land owned by Concom, it should be Concom, it should be the, we should be deferential to the the owner of the land or who has, uh, care and custody, so. Uh.
And at the same time, we should, whoever the owner is, should look to involve, like, the Open Space Committee or people that maybe, you know, have an interest in it. I think.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So should we try to schedule something then with, uh?
I mean, well, it might be, you know, that, uh, it might be a good thing if, uh, Graham put it on an upcoming agenda and and put it maybe on a date that. Uh, you know, a couple of us could attend and just be part of their discussion, maybe invite some other people like, uh, ACTA reps or others. There rather than a separate meeting, since they meet every month anyway, so.
What do you think about that, Graham?
Yeah, that sounds good, we can kind of coordinate a little bit as to who we want to come and all that, but. Yeah, I mean, we got it, uh, I mean, basically. Just about under thirty days the next meeting, so, um, and we get something together, I think, in that timeframe.
Yeah, I think ACTA could be a key player. Um. I don't know who else you think, Angus.
Planning board would be bad, I mean, because they get something, when I was a planner, we had something with, you know, you let Open Space know about it, but we said that's not happening. And it's good to know at the beginning phase, like you say, if the trail is, if you go over there, we can take it from the front, so that's why.
Probably is happening now.
Yeah, no, I I think it is, yeah, but also some of it, some of it is, I think, managing expectations in terms of timing, I I believe there was a a comment made during the site visit. Of like, oh, we can get that crossing done for next, next spring or next summer, and and Michelle's thinking like. You know, do you, do you have a plan to get permitting in place, because if there's not that. Plan and that funding to take it through notice of intent and so forth, it's not gonna be ready next summer, and so. It may have just been an offhand comment, but I know, you know, we're we're trying to, you know, do what we say, say what we, you know. Uh, and so, those little things can become. You know, people become discontent to something, oh, you said it was gonna be done next summer, it's like, no, no one ever. Who knew about what takes to. No one, you know, and and so it's, it it comes to, you know, we need to make sure that if, uh, you know, maybe the developer's setting aside a trail easement, but. Do we actually know who's constructing the trails and who's taking it through permitting, and, you know, to this day, we we continue to work with Green Belt, and that all. Tends to be very agreeable, uh, in terms of who's doing what, but sometimes it is, uh. Not as clear as maybe it could be, and and there is a potential for, you know, disagreement. And, and there is a potential for, you know, disagreement if in the future, if let's say they agree to do fencing, for instance, you know, the Portland lane area, but there ends up being a difference of opinion as to how much fencing or what the building materials are. Those are things that can become hiccups if they're, and, and it's very hard, like I said a few minutes ago, that you can't think through everything upfront and very often there's not time because the land acquisition process, uh, you know, often the vote's taken, you know, by town meeting before there's been time to think that all through. But I think now that we have a full time, you know, conservation agent, you know, she's going to be much more able for all of that stuff and help make sure, make sure that we all go into it with eyes wide open. And that way if someone has to allocate some funds to, to take something through permitting, uh, that we're, we're knowing that and not getting surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, it ties a little bit into the, the item, uh, T, you know, on the invasive management contract. And now, you know, that's been significant delays. Uh, and we got new information this afternoon, it's, it's going to be significant delays because there's a lot of permitting that was required to, uh, maybe hadn't been foreseen at the time that the, the funding was requested. It wasn't, wasn't built into the, uh, budget for that invasive species manager.
So Graham, do you feel good about the open space committee taking the lead on putting together a meeting on this?
Yeah, I think it's something we could probably pull off.
Okay. I'm glad to hand it off to you.
Preferably not on a Monday evening so that we can attend.
They meet Wednesdays.
Third Wednesday in a month.
Yeah, uh, are we thinking, uh, in, in person, uh, for this, uh?
Yeah.
You know, we love our Zoom meetings and open space, you know?
You're probably not pants on, right?
Yeah. I'm hiding in my bedroom from the kids right now. Yeah, so. Yeah, we could, uh.
Roll this conversation down.
It, it might be good to go through kind of the punch list of open items. I mean, you know, River Roads one I didn't mention, but that's another one very much with kind of loose ends.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, part of it also applies into just the prioritization, just, uh, uh, you know, because some of these are, or one or more of these could end up, we end up maybe transferring it to Christine Wallace to really like run with it, put it. And, and so we want to make sure we're prioritizing our effort toward, you know, the high priority.
Yeah. It's a good way to look at it because that will clarify the problems and the issues without identifying a little more from either.
Yeah, because there's a lot of specifics and, yeah, I just didn't have the, the time to put that all in, in there. There's, there's like so, so much. Sometimes if there's nothing in there, it's an indicator of there's actually a lot.
Yeah.
It's difficult to distill.
All right, Grant, so, uh, we can touch base maybe later in the month or, you know, when you're getting ready for this to see if you need support from the select board or how you want to handle it.
Yeah, start just figuring out kind of the rough outline of who we should invite, what kind of the agenda of discussion will be. And, yeah, go from there.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
All right.
Thanks, Grant.
That's it.
All right, Jim, are you keeping track where we're?
Uh, going back to the top.
Thank you.
Grant, Jim, E as in help.
Yeah.
As in M O U.
So this is the M O U we talked about last time with a lot of the legal stuff moved. And Angus, you did run this by, if you're on again?
Yeah, most of the edits, uh, came from her initially and then just some words, nothing beyond that.
Okay.
But I think it's a lot cleaner.
Yep.
Uh, I think it secures, uh, the town's interests in, in being the contract, uh, signatory to my office having that function. And it seemed to be very well received at the water commission meeting that, that actually most of us were, uh, wrecked. Correct, I was there. So I, I don't recall they formally endorsed it, but they seem to be very amenable to the terms that we outlined.
Okay. Any other comments or? Go ahead, Chris.
Angus, I mentioned to you, this might not be the meeting for it. I would not have voted to use the ARPA funds for this and the reasons why. But I want to get into that in this meeting or not?
I think so, yeah.
You mentioned it to one of the water people that we deal with and they said they didn't disagree, so. Um, I mean, it's water, I'm not watering the bridge. It's a done deed, so, um, I'm not opposing it, but.
Uh, is it a done deed?
Well, we're not past the point of overturn.
Okay. I sort of feel like.
It's been agreed.
I want to, yeah, I want to respect the previous, I wasn't on the board, so I'll just voice my opinion.
Yep.
And I'm not trying to rock the boat. But these are the perils that I saw with this, you know, and eight items. By separating the labor and the materials, when I was in a different end of the construction business, it's generally a problem for a number of reasons. The contractors will now become responsible for your material. That it's been wooded properly, that it's been stored properly, that it's correct, everything else. So when it comes to warranty down the road, they're going to say, well, I didn't load the parts. So you're going to have, you can potentially have that problem. Um, again, storage and deterioration, the town's going to buy this, they're going to, they're talking down the store right in your front yard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is potential for deterioration and degradation in material, security of it and things like that. Contractor shows up and go, hey, we're missing, you know, ten boxes of fittings. And the town that owns that, the contractor does it, they're absolving anything. Um, and it always comes down to the warranty. When you have one source they own, suit to not start to finish, if there's a problem, the warranty goes back to them. It's real easy. Um, the other problem, and this is because I was an estimator, you make a profit on both the product and the labor.
Mm-hmm.
So now you've just taken the $625,000 out of the contractor's pocket. They have to manage the material handling and they don't make any profit. Well, the labor numbers are going to go up because they've got to make their profit. And they know that they're, they're dealing with that component. So how much you save, I'm not sure. Um, because I don't know this industry, but I know it would have been in the news diary. Uh, it would have been generally, I worked for a large mill shop. We did, you know, three, four, five million dollar projects. And if we had an owner come to us, you know, Harvard said, hey, we've got all this cabinet work and go work for marketing and install. We wouldn't even price it, we'd just walk away because there is no, there's no upside at that point. If, like I said, if the product's out of square and out of spec, not on site at the right timeframe, anything at all, it costs you money and liability. So anytime you break the labor and material package, it's very dangerous. Um, what happens if the project doesn't go whole just for one single reason? Now you're sitting on $600,000 worth of material to store again. Um, that's generally the gist of what I hit every one of them. But the other thing I'd like to point out too, looking at it, when I see it, the pricing for the materials, the pricing has expired, expired on March fifteenth or twenty-three. So if I'm a contractor, you don't know my numbers of pricing I have, this number might not even be valid. It could be up 10% from yet. So I don't know.
Yeah, those are all the points that we, we discussed. Some of them, the, the main emphasis for this were the availability of the pipe. They were afraid that, what was it, like thirty month lead time when they first started working on this?
Thirty, but it was, it was.
It was, it was longer.
It was twenty years or it was up thirty years. Thirty weeks.
No, no, it was more than a year. That's why they were, yeah.
It, yeah, so it was, the, the, it appeared, Chris, based on what we were being told about lead time is that, um, and, and the, and the lead time issue was more of a supply chain issue at this point in time, um, as opposed to what things would have been like, you know, three years ago, four years ago, pre-COVID. Um, and, and, uh, so the only, it is, as, as we understood the situation, um, we would be in a position where we were asking for bids for, you know, for work on a, on a job that if we didn't have material available, we knew we were going to, right, right from the, the gate, we're going to be waiting for whatever that long lead time was and then for the, um, and then for the work to actually be performed. Um, so, you know, it, it seemed like from a timeframe standpoint, um, it would kill things. It, it, as, as far as the cost, um, that, I think we all recognized that that was a risk. There was a, um.
Didn't Mark talk to when the, a potential person put it in and they didn't? I mean, that was how it was represented, that it wasn't a big issue, but.
Yeah, well, there, there also, there was a, um, uh, is it 10%? I mean, it's not huge, but there, you know, there is, there is a buffer built in, it's somewhere in one of the proposals. There's a, there was a, a buffer built into the price, um, it, or into the estimated cost to account for, um, potential price escalation. Uh, you know, given, you know, given current circumstances, and I'm not pretending to predict anything with any knowledge, um, I'm not pretending to predict anything, period. And I don't have any particular knowledge that would allow me to do so. Um, but there's the possibility that, uh, supply chain issues are resolving themselves. Um, and maybe the pricing will stay stable or even come down a little.
So given that we have to update the quote anyway, um, is it worth reconsidering?
I, I don't, I'm not, no, I, I don't want to change. The previous board decided it. I'm just telling you that would have been my concern.
Yeah. I, I think it is worth reconsidering. I had a conversation with John Gregory at, at Tate and Howard and I asked him kind of, it was up to you, I mean, what, what do you think is the better approach? And he really felt that, that there's risk either way, but, but he definitely said, and I asked him this specifically, whether from a timing standpoint, uh, we were past any kind of point of no return in terms of how, how we were going to structure bidding. He said, no, you could go out to bid for the entire project this fall. And, and it would, obviously the construction wouldn't start, don't, the construction season next year. And that would put the owners on the, the respondents to, uh, supply the materials. Uh, but some of the bigger construction companies, they may have a lot of this stockpile now that maybe they didn't, you know, last, last frame. But he, he was, you know, clear, uh, John Gregory was clear. You haven't forestalled any options on this. And I think the water department and the water board wants to do whatever is going to work best. So it seems to me it's such a big dollar amount and that the consequences are huge. Uh, Chris, one thing you mentioned when you and I met, that you didn't specify tonight, maybe it was implicit, but, but I thought was a really good point is even just how this materials are stacked in terms of, you know, the sequencing of how it would go and.
Yes, not the contractor to know that, you're going to fight to get to the wrong one. They burn two days.
And that's a change order. And, you know, I thought that, I mean, you made a lot of really good points. So I, I think it's worth, you know, and, and also last spring, we were in the run-up to town meeting. Everyone was rushing, running. So I think having a little, you know, side conversation with, uh, Bob and Mark and, and maybe Chris and, uh, myself and John Gregory and just say, you know, what, what's the best way? And, and, uh, I, there's nothing that would prevent the select board from, you know, revising its prior vote on the ARPA funds, keep the amount the same. Um, but I think, I think it's definitely worth a conversation. You know, I, I think we, we all had a little bit of concern about this. We were relying on, on kind of the say-so of, of the water staff that now, now we've talked to other towns and, and they said it worked out fine, but there are a lot of unanswered questions on, on where the materials will be stored and what's that going to cost and security is a really good point Chris made.
Yeah, there was a new staff in the water department.
We do.
Um, so I, I do think it's worth revisiting.
So, okay, so you, you said keep the amounts. I, I guess I'm not sure what, at this point, what we're, we're reconsidering.
Separate purchase of the pipe.
Okay, so in, instead of separate purchase, then it would be rolled in, but, but the ARPA funds would still be used?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I misunderstood what was being suggested. I, I, I thought we were pulling the ARPA.
No, 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 that's never.
Okay, okay.
Are we close enough to price the whole project? I mean, it's been engineered.
Yeah, it's fully engineered, it's fully permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could put it out to bid, you know.
If you want, you can ask for a D doc alternate if the town supplies the pipe. And that way you're protected, you know what the real number is. You take a D doc alternate and involve the material for a standardized list of supply.
Yeah, you know, I've been saying, one of the things that was suggested, and I don't recall who suggested this, was that, um, by the town taking responsibility of supplying the pipe, it, it might allow, um, smaller companies that are not as well capitalized to, um, you know, to, to participate, to, to make a proposal. Um, you know, because if, if it's a, well, if it's a smaller company, the question is, you don't want to get, right? The issue is you don't want to get too many too small. But, um, if it's, if it's somebody smaller and, um, you know, and, uh, they have lower capital availability, then, then they might.
Then you want to be dealing with them.
Yeah.
I want somebody who can go in.
Yeah.
Do the job and get it done, no question.
But don't they contract with you, we're getting payment as a go along anyway, so capitalization. Rick, I, what I recall was that there was this fear that by the time you got enough information to go out for the labor portion, you'd then be looking at this incredible lead time. And they felt that if we bought it then, by the time we went for the labor portion, we'd be good step. We're so close to going for the labor portion, right?
Yeah, we, we have, we did both articles in the same town meeting, so it's kind of a.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's almost moot. It's almost like you should, you absolutely should do what, what Chris and I have been talking about.
Yeah.
Because you're not even our daily.
So.
We hold off on the.
I, yeah, what I'll do, if, if everyone's in agreement, and I, I mentioned this when I met with Bob and Mark last week, and I really emphasized, we're just trying to help and they really seem to fully understand that. Everyone just wants the best outcome. Uh, I think we, that meeting a couple of weeks ago, I don't want to overstate it, but it really feels like that was a good point. And, and it does feel like everyone knows we're really actually just trying to get the best outcome for the rate payer. So, uh, I think putting together a huddle, you know, and if the board's comfortable with Chris being the designated, since, you know, he's knowledgeable on this, I think we could put together that conversation this week. Uh, or, or no later than a week from today, um.
So we would need to update our pricing anyway. I don't know, Tina, I didn't realize. They must realize that, but.
Yeah, yeah, the EGAP quote, that, that was never, that was elasticative, that was never, you know, expected to be the, the binding quote, that was the, the basis of the request.
So this M O U, I mean, we would still need an M O U.
Yeah.
Um, so, but there's just an urgency to act on it, right? And it may even be revised a little bit.
Well, I would say that I can't, um, really enter an agreement with Tate and Howard until I have the funding kind of, uh, because the board's vote was contingent on, you know, a real agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think in my con- conversation with John Gregory a week and a half ago or so, I don't think another two weeks would be a, a big, I, I don't think it would affect the timeline.
Okay.
I think if, if the, uh, and, and I think there would need to be some, we need to relook at this because this is written as if it really is a separate contract.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think we would be intending that my office or the select board would be the signatory to the entire contract that would continue to be under the water department management as all of their, you know, capital projects happen. So I do think we need to retool the wording a little bit.
As far as the water board is concerned, I think it's fair to say the commitment is still there for the six twenty-five. Nothing to do with the number, it's got to do with.
The structure of the, the bid proposal. Okay, great.
So regarding that, uh, the way I interpreted what we, we have at this point was that, um, we'd committed to allocate as much as six twenty-five, but if the number was left for the materials, then that would be the number that would come from the ARPA funds, not, not six twenty-five.
But if you take in a, a furniture and supply number, that's hard to assess that. Unless, well, I guess if you have the D doc alternate, you know where it is.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that, that's a good point. So that's, that's the number we should work with. We should request the D doc alternate and, um, and that would be the, the, you know, the, the contribution, right?
Well, I do also though, want to, want to make sure everyone's clear on the, uh, the engineering cost because that was, the, the reason this kind of, you know, got such a high profile a couple of weeks ago was when the Tate and Howard invoice was put, put through, coded to hit this line. And that's where I, I kind of stopped things and then, you know, explained to Tate and Howard, no further work until this gets worked out, which is, which is where they stand right now. So when you all voted this back in the spring, it, it estimated the cost of the pipe, the contingency and the fencing. It did not include anything about soft costs or engineering or, or big costs. And I think you could say some amount of that might have been implicit. I'm not sure how you felt, you're the ones who actually voted, but it seems like some amount, uh, if it's separately bid. But it seems like some amount, uh, if it's separately bid, uh, may be reasonable. But what that amount is, your board needs to agree to that and that relies on a scope and contract.
So sort of our last meeting, we talked about a concern about what the engineering cost would be.
Yeah.
And, um, we haven't talked about that.
Well, right. It's, yeah, I mean, part of our concern, I think, was the, uh, the amount that was proposed, going way out of scale.
Right, because they, they already had, that, that was, presumably that was only part of specing out the product.
That's right, yeah. It's part of their base contract. They prepare all the bid documents and put it out to bid.
Right.
Uh, and that base contract for eighty thousand is already, you know, well overspent because there were two amendments that the water commission approved to that contract. So, uh, this third amendment that was the fifteen thousand dollar proposal, we, we have a lot of questions about that. Uh, including the fact that the bidding out the entire project was part of the base contract. But that's already been expended, uh, the, the authority of the water.
At this point, if.
And I understand they, uh, they don't have a source other than ARPA, although I can work with Mark on that, because it may be they have something in their, their operating budget or they're extraordinary unforeseen.
Yeah, I, I didn't infer that we were paying for engineering costs.
Yeah, it, it wasn't part of the materials, but they're part of the documentation that was submitted.
And if you're putting the whole package out to bid, there is no need to have engineering done for the purchases of the materials because that becomes a contractor's responsibility. You don't care what he carries, as long as he's got it all.
Yeah.
So that becomes an irrelevant component.
Okay. You're good?
Good.
All right, the next item is the water rate study. Uh, item F, and we draw a study. I have to say, I don't know why it took so long for twelve page report. I mean, did that strike you as? This is, all right, I, I feel like this is really just kind of a common pace from the last time, so I'm a little, um, they don't even talk about any water supply, which is really one of the major things we're trying to forecast. I'm curious where the three and four percent annual increases came from. Is that an industry standard on page, uh, page three of eleven? And this whole thing is based on these assumptions. Three percent annual, the water department salary and four percent admin costs. Four percent distribution expense.
I have a number of questions and comments. One, one thing that really jumped out on the page is that they paid sixty three of the packet, but, you know, based on this, on the, it's based on the approved ARPA twenty four budget, but it's apparent fifty grand more than what was the actual approved budget.
And we're going to reduce it.
And it's likely, it's expected to be reduced this fall. But I don't know where that one million, one ten, one seventy one number came from.
How was their discussion at the board, the water question?
No, there really wasn't. They, they just got, you know, it had come in that Monday for a Thursday meeting and it wasn't evident whether anybody had looked at it prior to the meeting. We were just given a copy after the meeting.
So the one thing, I looked at the conclusions and recommendations, they talk about, you know, rates need to be increased even if they're not approved in the system. And then they recommend scenario number two, with the modification of the rates, which went from twenty, basically at twenty four to twenty seven, you're zero to thirty five thousand gallons. That's a fifty five percent increase. That's going to be a shock to a lot of people.
And that doesn't even include the new water source.
That, that, this is base, yeah. But my question is, if you increase your water rates fifty percent, I suspect a lot of people will start either putting in their own well for irrigation or start conserving.
Yeah, which is going to drive them.
Put the revenues down, but they have the revenues going up. So I think you've got to cross points there.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that's a very risky assumption to make, I would expect. Just another comment on that page, if, uh, a premium rate when you go over the thirty five thousand gallons,
Yeah.
I would jack that up considerably more at the expense of keeping your base rate slightly lower, so that it becomes motivational, so that you're not
Yeah.
over watering in line and things like that. It's only, I mean, it's not margin increases, it's a twenty something percent increase. But I'd make it hurt, you know, you want to, who's over the thirty five thousand gallons of what? That's a lot of what. Issue costs significantly more because you're either being too luxurious with your bass and too wasteful with your water.
How about, how about the idea of reducing that threshold below thirty five thousand?
Something to monetize the component for, to do an indirect reduction, get people to reduce, yeah.
I would like to, have you ever seen Angus, um, like what percentage of the total is over thirty five thousand?
I asked that question at the meeting. I haven't seen.
I think that's an important.
I, because of my understanding, it was like a really small handful of customers.
Right, right.
Uh, but without seeing the data, pointing to this, it's not about that, it's yet to.
So you reviewed this report?
Yeah.
What, what's your opinion?
That we should be doing it ourselves on full.
Yeah.
Yeah, so not. Doubt, doubt. I mean, number one, you need to do it, understand the points that are all.
Not just check the box.
Yeah, exactly. So, and this is not every month and, you know, all of it takes twenty years.
You know, one thing, there's, there's a couple of references to, uh, kind of relative to nearby towns and whether we're, and, and it's very squishy language. You're more greater than sound less than.
Oh, we need to be on the same unit.
Well, it sure would be nice to have like some summary tables with some data there, not just, you know, relying on, uh, these kind of throwaway sentences. They really don't mean anything. They don't say anything.
So is there any further conversation about changing to cubic feet?
I did reach out to Mark on that, uh, and, uh, yeah, I had, I noted, and I talked to Wendy that there was, uh, you know, we, we use a different unit of measure than a lot of other towns. And his response was actually that a lot of, uh, he said, we're doing per cubic foot billing for the customer's benefit. Uh, to convert to gallons will be expensive and most of the waters have been setting up new bill and go to gallons. He said that, you know, in terms of like customers think about it in terms of gallons, not in terms of cubic feet, so that they like that unit measurement. And, and he's saying that, you know, other towns are converting to gallons. I, I don't know, but that's what he's told me.
All the towns I'm familiar with are included.
Yeah, most.
It just would make it easier.
That I found were in cubic feet.
So again, it doesn't make it easier. I didn't understand.
They do like comparables.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, 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 no, okay. No, I agree with that concept. Okay.
Yeah.
Listen, don't use.
Yeah. Uh, do you have any comments, Greg?
I, I guess the, the first thing is, yeah, I, I, standard unit of measures based on what I've seen elsewhere in the past is cubic feet, but I'm not in the water business. Um, so, um, to me, that seems to make sense. Uh, and, um.
I do think it would be good to have in this report as well, or other towns.
Right.
A new very, I think is a good comparison.
A new report, you go to the website, it says, I think it's a cubic feet.
But just in terms of relative costs, if we're talking about increasing our rate fifty percent, it would be good for people to save. Compares to.
To other, other, yeah.
They're not really going to get too much. It's going to be a big sting. They're going to look at it personally, you know. That's what I approve. That's a staggering.
I know.
I have to say it. They got, they've got to hear this too, though.
Yeah. So what, how did the water department leave it? Were they going to review the report and then discuss it or?
I don't really remember them saying, no, it, it, it appeared to me, and once again, it was a wonderful meeting. This all business.
Yeah.
It wasn't first and foremost on, on their priority list, because in the conversation, the, the rate increase wasn't the thing they were going to go to immediately. They were going to go immediately to figuring out how to reduce the current operating budget. So that just indicated that they had other things to do ahead of time. So that's all.
Well, they stated they wanted to save a rate increase for spring.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, so it's, it's not, and then they were just getting the hydraulic side of the suncon, right? Angus?
The updated one, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of.
Yeah, that's right. They got.
There's a lot of stuff we learned.
Right, so.
And then you gotta remember that we marked with, what, you know, yeah, yeah. Things that they've dealt with.
Yeah, they had that, that big issue.
I mean, they're.
With a well, uh, failure in certain equipment.
I, I think, I think it's fine to have a report, but, you know, we're, we're probably going to be looking at them with ourselves anyways.
Yeah, I just object to paying so much money for an inferior piece of work.
Yeah, no, yeah, right. Yeah, we all do, yeah, right. But what do you want to do about that? I, I don't know, because we're also relying on it for other things.
Yeah.
I, I don't think this was ever their, their, their area expertise.
Which is, which is why they said that after, so they shut it off this spring, so they took it in, so.
But e- even the old report was not that great, right?
Yeah, they took it off the wrong guy, but, uh.
So I would like to, I guess what I would like is for the water department or the board to say, yeah, this is not what we're expecting. We need to find somebody else.
That's what I will, I, I really do, right? I think. All highly think that, that this isn't where we're going next time.
Okay.
Well, but even this time, we don't want, you know, to close out this, I don't want to see an invoice come through paying the full amount that was subcontracted for this rate study.
Uh, right.
Until it's specifically accepted by the water commission as, as a final product. So I think if we, you know, similar to what we did with the hydraulic study, you know, I had, I had made markups through a bunch of pages of that and, um, I reviewed some of them verbally at the meeting a couple of Thursdays ago and they seemed to be well received. The water commission said, oh yeah, those are good points. And so it was agreed that, that we would meet, uh, me, Mark and Bob. So we're not last week for over an hour, went through each of them. They, they tend to agree with everything. So I think if we do something similar here, I made some markups. If you all made some markups or have some thoughts, send them to me. And I can, I can send them off to, to Mark and Bob and say, this is our review, you know, preserving the right for future comments, because some of the comments on this one, I think, are more substantive. At least for, for what I saw than what I had with some of the hydraulic study, which a lot of were, were, were mixed.
So are we confident that the comments you provided will get back to Tate and Howard?
Yeah, I need to, basically, I, I think it's one of these where if, if I want it to happen, I need to do it myself. So I think I'd be probably taking the handwritten and put it more into like a markup of a PDF and then specifically review it with Mark. Uh, because I know, like I said in the memo, there was some thing Bob had sent over to them, I gather, last spring that didn't get incorporated. Um, so we'd want to send our combined comments, um.
Is it worth scheduling meetings with Tate and Howard to go through it live rather than sending comments?
Yeah, that's a good, yeah, that's a good, yeah, that's a, I think that's worthwhile, yeah.
Well, that'd be fun. But in the end, you're going to be left with getting the report to the best you can get. And then beyond that, I would say you're.
I think this fifteen year plan is really like guiding ourselves, is the only way.
It's the only way to do it. You know, you need them for hydraulic. You don't need them for, obviously, you don't need them for the rate study. I mean, that's my.
Okay, so with me also on this? So did, you want to get your comments to Angus? Chris?
They, they, I didn't worry about if rates go up to utilization, but I'm, yeah, I'm in the book. It's a big problem, I think.
Yeah, um, the numbers that they've shown, I guess it was in the hydraulic study, suggested that we're, that the new, the war users, your war customers, um, are fairly far below, I mean, not dramatically below, but fairly far below the assumptions by the state. Um, but I remember that, right? Uh, the state assumes a hundred fifty gallons per person per day or something like that. Yeah. And, and, uh, so, and our numbers prove out, I don't remember what the number is, one ten, ten or one twenty or something like that.
But that wasn't, clearly, when that state number wasn't just a powder fact that they used. I didn't know that that was what you'd actually expect when someone.
Well, I, I think that was actually DEP documents that that was being referenced as the, uh, as their accepted.
That's what they use to calculate.
That's what they use to calculate certain things, not necessarily that's.
So, so, so maybe there's a safe, yes, maybe there's a safety factor built into that.
Yeah, right.
Okay, she's on to item H. Learning tree, please.
I think we, uh, I've been in, uh, correspondence with our tenant for a few months, uh, were pretty regular correspondence year round on different things, just landlord tenant issues. But I had reached out. Normally I would, I would like to get on this more like March or April with a June thirtieth end date. But this year, time got away from us, so it was, it was right around the end of the term, uh, of the priorities that I formally reached out. And I included some of the correspondence, but long story short, the, the rent has actually been the same for coming up on ten years. And initially, uh, it seemed that a rent increase would be justified. Ultimately, it's going to be up to this board, how you want to set things. But, uh, we did look at some, uh, uh, different commercially available properties available for rent. And, uh, it's not necessarily apples to apples, uh, both based on the location and type of space, but also based on including or not including utilities. But, you know, from, uh, rough numbers, it seems that their current rent, which is effectively, it depends on which, uh, measure of work footage we use, but it's between fifteen, fifteen per square foot and seventeen, seventeen. Coincidentally. Uh, it seemed to me that that's falls within what I would consider fair market rent. Uh, so if the board's agreeable to that, that would be the request of the tenant as to.
And then they're in utilities?
No. Uh, no, they do not.
And that's what I wanted to know. What's the heat, electric, water insurance? What does that cost the town? Because that's.
It's a lot.
We, we do have that. Wayne ran those numbers about two years ago, back when the lease was up two years ago. Uh, we do have that for the building as whole, is not metered separately. So, uh, we're making assumptions. It's the one portion of that is attributable to, uh, learning tree.
Well, I'm one thought I had Angus in reviewing this is that the outdoor player is not factored in, but that's, you know, a functional part of the space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, doesn't seem like that's included in her estimate, her, you know, square foot per child or whatever that metric is that. But I, I think it's significant that that area is provided for the school and that can be tamed by the child.
Mm-hmm.
She talks about the number its clients, whatever you call them, has been decreasing. Sounds like her business model is difficult to keep working, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody know how many kids are in this facility during the day?
Well, there's a maximum, uh, that can be, or it doesn't say how many are there.
Well, I'm just wondering though, yeah, over ten years, her rates have gone up, but our rent hasn't gone up. I just don't know how the business model works. I know some people think it's a benefit to the community just to have it. So I'm not looking to squeeze anybody. I just make sure the town's getting a fair.
But I don't think it's all West Newbury kids.
Probably not.
Yeah, my kids been there and it was happened, huh? West Newbury.
I was going to say, she approached me.
Really?
Yeah, when she came, we were doing business.
They're going to go to daycare?
We got to keep busy during that.
Yeah, I should sit around that desk.
So I guess the question is, are we okay keeping the rent the same? We want another two year contract. Um.
And I, I can bring those numbers that Wayne did. The reason I didn't put that in is it's, it's two years old and frankly, with everything we've, we've got going on, I mean, I can delegate that to a staff person. It's just with everything we've got going on, I've been trying to limit to some extent the amount of time, uh.
I'm just curious, it was subsidizing, this is what I get, you know, we're getting fourteen grand a year in rent. Is it costing us ten?
I think that was the trouble before. We couldn't really break out, rely on what.
Yeah, but the building can use a whole lot elsewhere. You got a.
But you still have to heat it though, in order to heat one.
You have a heating at seventy degrees versus forty, like I have a farm.
Yeah, it's heated, heated is two different.
I can eat forty degrees all year long for four hundred bucks, you know, so.
So, so the, yeah, the heating.
The, the back is done differently.
Yeah, exactly. It's different heating system, so it's done differently.
So then we can't get a number. I thought that we weren't able to get a number when we did it before. I thought that's what Wayne said.
I think, I mean, Wayne meant in the sense of like if you turn the heat on in the main area, you can't differentiate how it was usually there or what you can't.
Actually, I, I thought there were, it's been years, we downed it, but I thought there were actually two different heating systems. I thought there was a heating system for the, for the main building and then, I mean, the electrical service, I think, is the same. heating systems, I thought there was a heating system for the, for the main building, and then, I mean, the electrical service, I think, is the same service.
What kind of heat does it have? So it might have one oil, it might have one oil tank feeding two different firms.
I think that's what it is.
Except for then you can't really tell the time.
You can put a meter on after it comes out of the tank.
Yeah, you could do that.
All right, that's getting a little complicated.
I just don't wanna find out that we're paying twenty grand between heat, electric, water insurance, and you're getting fourteen grand. Even though the town has some component in that, obviously, the majority is the facility.
When Rick talks about sequencing, this is a good example of sequencing, because you gotta determine how you're actually gonna be using that building with the best use of it, and, you know, so it could be in fact be very similar to what it is, with the library in orientation front or whatever. But without going into something like that, you then don't know how much to invest in some things that might make it, you know, like putting in a separate electric meter and all that stuff, so you're really compartmentalizing it. But that building needs some attention as to how it can be utilized and how you're gonna go forward over the next twenty years, I think. It's a resource, but it's a hundred.
It's similar to children's council too.
Yeah.
Somebody had that discussion, I'm sure.
I'm sure, this winter, because we're coming up with the bid requirement, that'd be for years, if we did that. Which hadn't happened for twenty years, but it's happening now.
So, but with children, or with Learning Tree, we're doing it basically year by year basis. Because I recall back around COVID.
Well, it's been, it's been two years. It's two year on COVID, it was more year to year, because it was the particular impacts of COVID on business. The writer board had agreed to a reduction in that for that period.
Right, okay, so we are on a two year basis with Learning Tree now?
Yeah.
So would we need to install additional meters in order to quantify the energy cost? I guess I would be interested in that, not for this contract, but, you know, perhaps over the next few years, we could figure out how you know, actively to channel the costs.
Yeah, I think we could, I think we got Brian on that, I think we could figure that out very quickly.
But at the same time, what I would mean to say is, at the same time, you might wanna look at beyond all the stuff and all of that related stuff, because we could be treating it, not caring that it's an heat sieve over there, or, you know, I mean, you know, given all the sustainability, that section of the building might need some attention, but the whole building continues to need attention.
Yeah.
You know what, one of the emails, I had sent Kelly the breakdown of where our costs were. Pull that out quickly, but is Caitlin Bradtree, would they have pulled that out of Math Energy Insight, look out for the whole building, I'm guessing just for her space. But it did show, as you would expect, increases in energy costs over that period.
Yes, there's not more than twenty-three students in the contract. I circled that, yeah.
Angus, I'm sorry, the work for the comps, who's work is that?
It's my office's work, primarily Rebecca helped me with that.
Any reason that it's not been raised for ten years, I guess that's.
I think it's a public service, you know, check through.
Well, that's about one, so do we not wanna touch it, is it the hot potato?
It's, I don't think it's the hot potato, but I mean, I feel better after Angus and Rebecca did the comps, at least we got some sense that what we're charging is reasonable. I mean, it's actually higher.
Without the cost of utilities, it might not be, you could lose some money on this budget.
Yeah, the comps don't show whether they're utility included.
Yeah, not included, not included, not included, not included, not included. So they're paying the utilities on top of the rate, which is typically the way that we source, it could be triple now.
Yeah, usually it's triple.
We should add them in when we pay Wayne.
So if we installed a meter, we could charge enough utilities, maybe we go down and mark what we see as target rate.
Yeah, exactly, and then charge utilities, because they said someone's worried about what's going on.
Angus, how do you think that would go over the challenge? If we went down to twelve dollars per square foot and then hundred eighty, nor any thirty, isn't that what? I'm having trouble finding.
Fifteen, thirteen, twenty-five, that's eight nine. Runs from twelve to twenty-five, slowed down a little.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
I mean, she's right in the wheelhouse, regardless of the utilities, so. Again, I'm like.
You have to remember, this is a, this is a grade C building too. It's not, it's a classic building, it's not, it's not a very good building. But, you know, so to win his point, bring it, and you don't have to necessarily do it all at once, but you could put in place something that, you know, ups the lease, but changes over to where they're covering utilities, which makes a lot of sense, and you could keep the rate where it is, but, you know.
In a year fall, I'm saying the next cycle.
Yeah.
I think that's.
We're making motion to accept.
Yeah, so to separate out, I'm just looking right now at, you know, say the last twelve months electricity usage. It's, I'm not gonna add up all the numbers, but it's something a little over two thousand dollars for the entire building, you know, both.
But they're gonna be the, they're gonna be the lion's share.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Yeah.
I cannot.
Well, they've only got eight hundred square feet, but now you haven't interested the building to a higher degree because they're in there, I don't know.
Well, so you may end up finding some stuff that's interesting when you do it, as, you know, any of us that, you know, Rick or any of you deal with these things, you could find out that there's a jerry rig of a system over there, no one's ever noticed it, and you could be eating, you know, you have a debate as to whether bathrooms are part of the front or part of the back, but you could find odd things going on there where they could be dumping heat into the main building and not help.
And that's what I'm saying, probably it does happen.
Yeah, but I'm sure it happens, you know.
Make a motion?
Yes.
I did find the email I'd sent to Kelly back on July nineteenth, and I had sent some data from Math Energy Insight for the town hall generally that Caitlin had pulled for me, and that showed the costs in FY twenty-two and twenty-three. So during that period of time, oil went from eighteen sixty-three a year to twenty-four fifty-two. So almost a thirty, well, thirty percent increase roughly, and electric went from fifty, about fifty-eight hundred to about seventy-seven hundred, and so, you know, very significant increase. And, you know, I sent that to her when she responded, and just reminded me that that was for the whole building, not for her feet. You know, I think what it comes down to is, you know, we've got into this later project. Between my time, Caitlin's time, Rebecca's time, meeting on site, my work with Bush, I would estimate over the last two months, we've put in at least twenty hours of staff time on this. So it just gets to a point where, you know, how far do we go at the expense of the other things that need time and effort, so. You know, we'll go as far as you want us to go, but it's, you know, based on what I've already written down coming out of tonight's meeting, and the fact I'm taking a couple of days off between now and September fifth, I'm booked for the, between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
The proposal was not too really changing.
No.
No, 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 no.
For the next cycle.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Could I just ask, so you said seventy-seven hundred for what?
Yeah.
For heat.
For heat.
Forever. So only seven hundred for heat, you said, wasn't it? We're getting the electricity at two grand.
No, that was the way of oil, was the two grand.
Yeah, so the numbers aren't, yeah.
But, and that's.
I'm adding that number right now.
For electricity?
No, for oil right now.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I swapped them, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Seventy-seven to ninety-seven hundred, you're on your ten grand on utilities.
Yeah.
For a fourteen thousand dollar, that doesn't include, I'm sure there's a portion of insurance for that liability in there.
There is.
I'll still make the motion, we can go from there, of that. Make a motion, we'll renew the lease on the Learning Tree preschool for two years, maintaining the current rate of twelve hundred seven dollars and forty-four cents a month, and notifying the tenant that on the next renewal, utilities will become part of, anticipation, utilities will become part of their obligation, pending review by the town.
Second, further discussion?
I think I'm in agreement, but, yeah, so just, just a quick add. Only, you know, not, not not to the penny, you know, we're looking at about seventy-three, seventy-five for heating in the last, you know, between.
Yeah, that's what Angus said.
Right, yeah, right.
But I think it's.
So, yeah, so, so the total utility numbers are ten thousand ninety-five hundred dollars, or, you know, it's gonna change year to year, but.
But that's for the whole building, that's for the whole, which they have probably the greatest priority.
It's not, it's not, you're not gonna get Grish off of this, but we also, she serves a certain.
Yeah.
That was the one.
Okay, all there.
Aye, aye.
Right, next item, review of no change of articles for spring town meeting. Anyone see anything that's not in here? One thing I noted Angus is the potential CPC article for the.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure how things went on Thursday.
Yeah, for the eligibility pass, but, so one question Vanessa had is if the appraisal for the CR is not available until, you know, after FinCon meets, can the ask be, you know, pending you know, an appraisal, or how it got worked, she said it might be the end of September. This is the green belt acquisition of Ash Street. The CPSC article, the problem is the appraisal is not, may not be available until after it's gone through the FinCon process and potentially.
Could be pending a valid appraisal.
Well, that's what I'm asking, so that would be acceptable, Angus?
It's up to FinCon, but it sounds like it, yeah.
Rob, with any manageable for you?
I'm sorry, what? I'm reading the list, I'm sorry, apologies.
If there's a green belt acquisition using CPC funds for CR, and the appraisal value is not available in time for your conversation, is that, can it be contingent on?
Oh, sure.
All right, just wanna confirm that.
One man's opinion, absolutely, I understand, we'd love to hear about that.
Any other ones that?
I did get a submittal today, I knew the, on the planning board, the zoning on the ADUs was coming forward, and I'd heard about this other, but I'd forgotten. Which Sam has drafted a bylaw amendment to do with non-conform uses and structures, so I don't know where that'll go, I will tell you the, I gave Sue the okay to send both of those amendments to town council earlier today, so those are under review with legal, and they have scheduled, planning board has scheduled their public hearing for September nineteenth to consider both potential amendments, obviously contingent on them staying on the warrant or being put on the line.
Yeah, I have an idea that I mentioned under new business two, three meetings ago. There is a this company called Flashboat, and they, you know, essentially solicit information, you know, using text, email, or voice regarding specific issues for town, no new reports looking at, or actually being subscribed, but I have no idea what their results are yet. But, and it's probably premature, but I don't know if anybody looked at that at all, thought about it. You know, I think to some extent, as far as resident homeowner and taxpayer feedback, we are in a little bit of an echo chamber sometimes, you know, we know the people we know. There are people who are, you know, active and vocal, and, and that's great, I'm glad they are. But we really don't know what probably ninety percent of residents in town really think, and what their opinions are about specific items. And, you know, I think it would be good for for town government, you know, and for Flashboat to understand as much as possible we can about others, and and there was a cost associated with that, I don't, I think it was something like eight thousand dollars a year. I don't know exactly, and I haven't researched it in depth, and again, this is probably premature, because I don't think we've looked at it enough to talk about it intelligently, but I just wanna throw that idea out there, you know, I wondered if it was something that we wanna move forward with, and if we did, that would be, you know, fall into the potential article proposal.
So wouldn't that be an annual town meeting, if it's an annual expense, rather than a one-time? It would be eight thousand a year.
Or I do it this fall.
And that would be a full time again.
Sure, okay, then I can, I can buy that, I just, I think we'll look at it, and I'm not necessarily sold on it myself either, but I, you know, I think I personally feel like I don't know enough about what other people in town, I know the people I know. But, but I don't know what the rest of town thinks.
Yeah, sometimes it's surprising.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I've got one question.
So, Angus, do you have an annual town meeting that's running yet, or you do, did you write that down? Okay, awesome, thank you, go ahead.
We got the radar trailer, the intent is for Ash Street.
It's for all?
And all.
Yeah.
But entitled, in compass with that, was engineering, I said it's speed bumps. Was the other thing, like I said, we have to get fun for energy. Do that on there anyway, so anybody gonna do engineering to look into traffic coming on Ash Street?
So that's not really at the police department, right?
No, no, I don't know where it goes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to. I'm just not sure we can take that project on right now.
There seemed to be a quasi commitment in what I'm doing, I don't know.
Well, I don't think that was a fall town meeting, more article necessarily. I mean, I think we have to proceed with the fish and wildlife requirements first.
In what?
I mean, we have filing to do every time we maintain the road, we've got to come up with a management plan, all of that stuff. Do you think Angus is that on your updates?
We've got, yeah, we've got that new meeting, what they have tomorrow. Yeah, it looks like we're gonna have to file with National Heritage.
Maybe we can couple speed bumps, turn them into migratory channels as well, so they can.
I thought it was, except matching crawl through there and having a truck come over and grab your head.
Yeah, that's on the list, I just, I, I wasn't thinking we're gonna do that this fall.
Like Green State goes to the spring.
I guess that's fine. We'll buy more wildlife in the spring before we get there. We'll bring in the bodies to the meeting.
All right, well, are you fine with deferring it, or is this a big deal?
Obviously, there's more going on with Ash Street here in National Heritage than I know, so I'm not gonna push it, I'll get some information here.
I mean, I would like to do this sequentially, like fifty radar trailer, and then that's one piece, that resolves fish and wildlife, and then I think speed comes last. But that's my.
They come in the spring.
They come in the spring.
They come in the spring.
Potentially.
After everything's dead.
It's no worse than any other street, nobody's counting, I mean. All right, anything else on this list, anybody have questions or not familiar with any of this stuff?
So it is citizen petition.
Yeah.
But it would seem to me that that type of discussion would also be best done in, you know, as a citizen petition, but we usually don't take up
I think it won't.
matters such as this at fall town meeting, I mean, you know, there's different criteria for going to fall town meeting.
Yeah, which is not necessarily.
It's a higher threshold.
It's a higher threshold. For a signature, say, a hundred signatures.
Yeah, that's fine, but I, 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 I'm not, it's due to the test profit. And I'm not saying we can say anything better, but if I had my brothers in this life. I'd rather see that presented at an annual town meeting.
That's, and I, I, I think that's perfectly reasonable, but if it's citizen petition, I know, I understand that, I'm just saying, I know.
Additionally, if.
But, but who knows, if, if you have any powers of persuasion, you might be able to.
I don't know, I feel like it's so, you know. Critical, right, I think there've been a lot of perceptions about fall town meeting, and I just don't, I don't share it. If it comes up in the fall and you need to do it.
You don't.
My, my only concern is if they feel that it was not wrong, they could submit it at any time, if you have that. Our own special regarding one issue only. So I think the only, my only notice on this, Rob, I think was from you, you forwarded something to me by email a couple of weeks ago. So I added my last.
Cause you haven't heard from them.
I mean, you may be, I haven't heard anything other than the email.
That's why I'm trying to remind people that this might be best done.
Oh, but I don't know anything about it, other than. So I don't know if you have a contact there or something, but.
Well, I, I know.
Or powers, if you have power, say, to persuade you.
Well, I, I don't know about power to persuade, and I think I might have to persuade, but, but, uh, yeah, I, I do have, I can go. The other channel to go.
All right, but you say it the wrong way, they're gonna think you're, what's that?
Right.
Guy's name who wants to change it to twenty-five, the, the, uh, voting age to twenty-five. Um, I, this isn't a political.
Right, so I didn't put it, but, uh.
No, I'm not.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, yeah, no, I know what you said is true.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
On the personnel committee bylaw, you have a question mark, that's whether to revise or repeal?
Yeah.
Do we wanna talk about that?
I, I don't, I, 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 well, I, 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 I thought we pretty much concluded that it makes sense to repeal.
Okay, and then.
That's what I thought, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we decide there is a function that we would like that committee to perform, we go.
Then we redefine every estate, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my, what do you think, Chris?
Um, I, I have a question about the pageful through the interior scans, is that, um, so I, 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 I know that the, um. Uh, the engineering firm or the architectural firm, um, has capacity to do, uh, you know, three D. Modeling or three D scan and, and great presentation. And I don't know if that's what we're talking about here, I didn't recall it, that was a separate, I, I'm not, it's amazing, I'm not arguing with, I just didn't call it that. I thought that was kind of like, oh, this is what we do.
No, so, yeah, I had the same question, I had, you know, been through the interview, so I had reached out to them, I don't know, maybe a month ago to, to say, you know. It's, it definitely was something they, that came up in the interview as, as a capability to have. And it, uh, my assumption was it was not part of their bid, it was kind of something they could offer, so I reached out to them to, to learn more. And they said, yeah, that would be something I had on, and so I, I did say I'd be interested to see a quote, so they set that alone. I forget the exact amount, I think it was around eleven, eleven or twelve thousand. And that included hosting this on a cloud for a period of six months. Only, so there'd be an additional amount for every six month that you basically keep it active, so. At the time, I said, this is not something that we have the funding for, but also it's not something that would be helpful. You know, until maybe after this study.
Right.
Uh, because, you know, I could see potentially some value in, in the public, uh. Kind of outreach surrounding the study and the results of the study. Of having something that's very interactive, that's photorealistic, could actually walk people through, because most people in town aren't gonna have. The experience you and I and others have had of tours through the building on multiple occasions, so. It's definitely a neat technology, it could, I think, have really valuable implications. But it's something that I, I told them at that time, you know, it wasn't something we had money or, or need for. But I wanted to make you aware, so I was gonna put it on into the packet, I can forward what I have, you know, tonight or tomorrow. Uh, I didn't wanna bog down tonight with all of that, but, uh, it's, uh, it's something that if you think we. Would have value, we could go to the fall town meeting and ask for money for it. Uh, it's something we could decide we wanna do, but we don't wanna do till sometime in the future.
Okay.
Uh, there would have been some value since they were already mobilized and into the building this summer. But that's a marginal, you know, cost savings.
Well, yeah, it's probably better if they understand the building more before they do that, I would think that the more they know about the building, the more they know where to focus their effort.
Right, right.
Um, I, I, I think, based on having seen their presentation. The presentation where I thought that that was part of the deal.
Not part of the deal.
Which is fine, because that currently. Yeah, yeah, so, um, I think it would be a valuable tool. And would couple well with their report, whatever their report shows and whatever conclusions their report draws. Um, the one thing I wonder about those is six months, so how much does it cost to get another six months, or?
It was, it was three figures, it was like hundreds. Like the total cost included the scan, you know, and then the hosting was, was definitely. And, and I could probably pull it out real quick, but it was definitely hundreds, not a thousand or more.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, because, um, I think it's gonna take us a little while to, uh. Digest and come to conclusions.
Not, not to be paranoid, but did we want a three D scan? That was another question that came up, actually, that, that, uh, I know, you know, why do we have opinions on that?
Oh, I see, okay.
Like, they want a three D layout of the entire building. Yeah. The world we live in unfortunately. Yeah, that's, uh, one aspect that I'm.
The other question, I mean, we're not debating these now, we're just trying to make sure that we're just complete.
Yeah, it was eleven, seven, and then it was six hundred dollars per six months. Uh, so a hundred dollars a month to access the scan, I'll say to it. Now, just, just. After the initial six months, uh, of access to virtue scan, access can be purchased in six month increments, so the eleven, seven. Includes six months, and that will be basically a hundred dollars a month after that. So if we, if we decide to do it, we wanna make sure the timing aligns with when it's actually gonna be helpful to us.
Right, so this is just a small plan, but in a.
No, it's actually like they set up, and you've probably seen.
I've seen it on real estate houses. You walk through and all this happening.
Yeah.
You say scan, I'm wondering, it doesn't.
It's a scan, not a photo, I think it's.
Yeah, but it doesn't get into theoretically the walls, the electric and systems and all that.
No, no.
It's just a visual, so people can understand that they have an ability.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on this?
Where, where do we stand on that one, do we want that to be an article?
I'll put it in the materials and you can make that decision, and I'll, I'll forward the thing, uh, actually, I've got it up right now, so I'll just forward.
Yeah, so if there was, um. Yeah, if they have anything that. That they can send us to, to answer Chris's question about, you know, so what does this actually look like, what does it actually show?
Level of detail.
Right, yeah. Somebody else is cool, before we decide what I wanna do with ours.
Yeah, the other thing we should talk about is the idea of having a joint meeting with FinCom. Um, was that discussed at your meeting? Yeah. What is feeling?
We would love to do it.
Would you be inviting us to your meeting, is that how?
Well, so one of the things we discussed was that, of course, you know, nothing really comes to us without. Huge blessing, but we wanted to start it up in a way that it's clear that we're not kind of. Generally agreeing whether something goes forward, that still remains your purview as to whether something will go forward. Um, beyond that, we just felt it is best, to the extent we can, to have. Like someone like Fred or someone presenting.
Just one time.
One time, and that's not to say that questions don't come from it, but, you know, it, it, it seems more expedient. For those people.
Yeah.
So, so, I don't know, I, I mean, we're comfortable doing it really anyway. But I remember the last time we discussed it, there was some concern. The select board wanted to make sure that they were kind of driving the bus, uh, those that go, you know, we're.
That's prior for.
Kids are driving the bus, we're on the bus again.
So September fifth, our next meeting will be decided on the one, right? Or the warrant's closing, so then what's your, what if we had one FinCom meeting, the select board came to, and one select board meeting, FinCom came to? And kind of split the article, do you think that would cover them all?
So, um.
Probably not.
Probably not, I, so I'm, I'm thinking it's three nights.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, because of availability, like we have one fellow who's gonna be in research.
Right.
Uh, I'm thinking Angus, if we can start this. A week after Labor Day and do three weeks and get it done.
So we can do two Wednesdays and one Monday?
Yes, well, um, sorry, you have a Wednesday as an issue?
Yeah, my, you know, there's a parents' night at my daughter's school on Wednesday the thirteenth.
Yeah, we're, we're good with Thursdays, by the way, so we're, we're open to Thursdays and Wednesdays, our ideal, we know that. Mondays are your night, so we're, we'll certainly accommodate that. Um, I think you guys gotta kind of map out the logistics, or if we can start a week after Labor Day, meaning. Uh, the eleventh and do three weeks. Cause Jim specifically wants to make sure he attends the last one, he's feeling guilty.
All right, so Angus, which Wednesday do you have a conference?
Uh, the thirteenth.
The thirteenth, okay. So.
My only other conflicts I think are all gonna be shared review of select board CDC.
All right, so what if we did the fourteenth for your meeting that week?
Yeah.
Then our meeting would be the next Monday, and then the following week, the Wednesday, for you, does that work?
Was that a good decision? Fourteen, Thursday the fourteenth, Monday the eighteenth, and Wednesday the twenty-seventh. So, FinCom takes the floor, please.
Yeah, that will be a FinCom meeting that we'll attend, and then FinCom will attend our meeting on the eighteenth, and then we'll go, then I'll enjoy it.
Rob, I, I, I would suggest that you may need an additional.
Oh, yes, no, we're, we're, we're in there for the fourth, for sure, yeah, absolutely. One of the things I did, uh, earlier today, Angus and I were exchanging notes without any dialogue. Simultaneously, I had told him about my constraints for time, and he told me about his, you know, meaning, uh, other, other things going on. Um. The one thing I asked was whether or not the FinCom booklet deadline, which I presume is. Finished product, but not out to print yet.
It's kind of the same thing.
It's almost the same thing, right?
Yeah, because even when we send it out to print commercially, we often will run forty or fifty copies here.
Yeah, right, 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 so when, when, right, so it's, it's final, right.
Yeah.
It's final, but you may not have gotten everything back on print.
Right, right.
So what, what I was hoping to do is move that to the tenth, the day after Columbus Day.
The, it's all, so, so.
Reasons.
Yeah, I told it earlier, the reason being is, the warrant's gonna be posted fourteen days ahead. And as you know, the warrant and FinCom booklet are two different things, but over the years, they, they've kind of been conflated. I think this past FinCom booklet, I might suggest, and was the first one where the booklet actually said in the header. FinCom booklet, if you look back at all the prior FinCom booklets, they all say, I mean, warrant, that's not the warrant, the warrant is what you all signed that.
Right, right.
So the deadline for the warrant is definitely the sixth, cause it's fourteen days ahead and, and it takes out the weekend. Uh.
You take out the weekend, meaning you're not working Columbus Day.
Meaning from a fourteen day compliance standpoint, uh, you can't count the weekend, probably Columbus Day.
You can, you can, you can roll that weekend.
Right, it's just like a posting requirement, yeah, so, so the fourteen days definitely is the sixth.
Right.
Uh, if the FinCom, I, I doubt there'd be any, you know, I think if you got it out the tenth, that's still.
Yeah.
You know, thirteen days ahead, I don't think.
It's available on, it's, it's not, it's not my knowledge or requirement that, uh, it's not the same requirement as warrant.
No, it's not.
So I would just.
No, actually, the bylaws is five days, the bylaws is five days.
Right, so I would, and, and of course, we want to do better than that, we don't have, so, uh, I would just ask, I think. Wednesday the fourth is gonna be really important for us, our meeting, and I would just like to say that the FinCom booklet. I'd like to have the deadline be the tenth.
I'm agreeable with that, I, I don't think you have any problems with that.
It's impractical.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have that extra couple of days.
So just a general question, I don't know if you talked about this, the applicant or where we will present. Their, um, article will, FinCom and select board vote at that same meeting, or?
Well, that was the one thing we wanted to get direction from you on, uh, we don't, we, 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 we actually didn't feel. Compelled vote then there, we, we prefer, I think, there's some sense in waiting for you. To say when it's, boom, and then we go after you, that's, I think, is, is that fair to say how we discussed it?
In the same meeting or the subsequent meeting, I think that would get messy if we have to lay votes.
I would do it, if the presentation is complete, without exception, we, and if the FinCom, I know the previous FinCom had a real issue. Not voting till Columbus Day, but so then, literally, think that table, but the FinCom, they were here, presentation, we vote, you vote, done.
Right, and so it was a little bit more of, not simultaneously, but perhaps. Since you have to make decisions to whether it goes to warrant, you tell us that it's going to warrant, and then we can tell you what our recommendation is, that's what we. That, that was just a concern that we, we actually are.
Well, there's two steps, one of this, it's going on the warrant, and then one is when our vote is on it, so we'll decide it's on the warrant, right? Yeah, so we'll know if it's on the warrant.
Okay, I mean, you, you can always take something off.
Right, that, that, that's what we, that's, that's what we wanted to, we didn't, we didn't, we, we just didn't wanna get into a situation. Where, where all of a sudden you guys are going, well, membership just come on, and we're in a corner going, yeah, great. Five to nothing four, you know, so that, we just wanted to go with that.
So are we gonna artificially have two hundred tables, or can we just?
No, I, I think we would do here, well, we've done this, we've done this in the past.
I would literally change the chair's face in that way, but that table over there, let the FinCom be there, the place to put paper and stuff.
But we would just wanna make sure that it's going, and then we would vote, if, if, if you guys end up saying, well, you know, it's not ready for time time, we brought something totally different. We wouldn't wanna be casting votes, that's all, so we'd look for you for someone who needs time.
Got it, all right, I think that sounds the, the trial, we think we're.
Yeah.
And so, so the other FinCom, they, they would not do anything till the select board had voted, they are adamant.
Well, we'll try it and see how it goes.
Yeah, exactly, you've always said that from the beginning, and, and I, I can tell you Angus was there, so if I'm misstating, but. It seemed to me that, that we were actually inclusive about this.
That's the people that are presenting.
Yeah, so, so many, so many, plus, you know, so. One of you may have a question that we never thought of.
Right.
I mean, you, you, you know, and, and by first, I mean, so it, it's gonna be better for us to.
And I think you make note to the FinCom as well as we would, you don't, you still vote your own way, you don't have to follow. We do.
Oh, no, you know that we don't anyways, I mean, what, are you crazy?
You always pay attention, are we doing?
All right, we ready to move on, can I talk about the budget?
Yeah, so this one, uh, you know, we had our monthly, uh, meeting of the, uh, my counterparts, the other two towns, and, uh. Basically, just looking to give, uh, Justin and his team, uh, and the school committee some, uh. Guidance of what we want to see for budget presentation, as you know, this past year, we tried something different with the three towns. Together, I heard some people really liked that, some people very much didn't like that, and, uh, the signal that. You know, Justin's sending is that they're gonna do it however the three towns. And uh the signal that, you know, Justin's sending is that they're gonna do it however the three towns want it done. And they're happy to go to each of the three towns individually, or to to work toward another uh kind of shared. Forum, Rob also suggested maybe there's some some hybrid where there's some shared forum, but there's the designated of each. Uh town select board and finance committee, as opposed to the whole, you know, the whole membership to allow for more. Uh, you know, a more practical venue for for real hands-on discussion, but. So basically, I, you know, this isn't something that's got to be decided tonight. But I think early in the cycle, we wanna uh, and it's not just obviously other two towns too, we wanna give them some direction. What we'd like to see, so they can plan accordingly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'd like to see a more focused, like practical, when you described, interaction with feedback, um. I I feel like what they did before was kind of a PR thing, I mean, it was good information, but it didn't feel conducive to having that.
Yeah, there was some dialogue.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was a different time, they were trying to sell, you know, the identity stuff.
Yeah, well, then you're getting a simple.
What I would like to see is that they could come to us with their preliminary budget. They talk that, and then once they have the three towns, then come back and have the one.
The big.
Big group meeting, yeah, that way you have your input without being intimidated, I mean, there was no way you could. Ask questions and give out input at that meeting, that was not a place.
So do you think they need to do that three times though, come to Army, or could we send a representative? You prefer having one year?
That's the way they used to do it, and I found that more comfortable, I mean, plus. You gotta see the superintendent once a year, I think, right? I think that's gonna be more practical as well, uh, in the other towns, I gather, that it, you know. Once it gets into a designated, that can become really politicized and and maybe the other towns, and so. I think that's what they need.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, having a designated doesn't really convey, I mean, I'm sure I don't do a very good judgment, I don't think anybody can. Really thoroughly convey what was thought, um, and what was said.
Okay.
No, I I one emphasis of this, though, I think. Angus, has to be. Have an initial discussion. Probably with the town manager, town administrators. As to. What we'd like to see before we get anything being conveyed, I think sometimes. It's my my take on this has been, they've been off formulating what they want to sell. As opposed to coming out and finding out what we're willing to buy, and 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 to start that off. I think that you've got a town manager, two town administrators, it would be nice if they could. Maybe get there first, just to have that dialogue before anything comes out here and is conveyed. Cause that's my impression, so that. I mean.
They already do talk, that's pretty original, basically. We we do, and I think one of the challenges that they'll they'll articulate on that is that the uh. Local budget impact is not something they can know until they know what the state match is gonna be, so. They can't wait until the state puts out those numbers to determine their budget, so there's always gonna be, um. You know, even if the towns set a target of like a percentage increase or whatever, uh, that's not something that they can, uh. You know, know until they get the state match, and uh also, as as we know, it's the uh, uh. The superintendent's gonna look forward to the budget with the school committee, you know, it's under look forward, not what we know and look forward.
Okay, so it sounds like the feedback is to have individual meetings with the select board. And then a group meeting later on in the process, right?
Yeah, and again, if ours can be preliminary, and that will give feedback, and we just the final presentation, it's. More ready for primetime with the public too.
That good, Angus?
Uh, yeah. Thank you.
Alright, the next item is the potential land use planning event, some has disappeared from the description.
I couldn't figure out the shape of the tables, so.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, I hope with the memo I put together sets out the challenge, you know, we can do things in parallel. Which is totally fine, um, you know, this was an idea that came up with the idea that it it could be. Kind of a help to get more people who aren't just the usual suspects. Uh, but also to to create something that's kind of exciting that everyone wants to get to, um, it's a lot to pull off, and uh. You know, it would be, you know, six or seven weeks from now, so I wouldn't be heartbroken if we went away from this, um, um. But. If we don't do something consolidated, we we're gonna have a lot of extra meetings this this fall, winter, and into the spring, and uh. Uh, between the the various uh projects underway, some of that public input is cause we want it, like P D school. Others is cause we have to have it, because we have to check a box, whether that for a. You know, housing production plan, or the house mitigation plan update, um, but when you layer that all over. One another, uh. And and the fact that in a given month, there's a lot of, you know, most weeknights are. You know, the standing meetings of this board or committee or that one, uh, it it does become a logistical challenge, uh, of how are we gonna? You know, get all this done in a way that really does engage the public, and I I think it does, if we're, if we start to advertise. You know, multiple meetings, uh, you know, a single week. On different major events, it's, I don't think it's realistic that your average resident's gonna go to multiple. Public meetings, uh, and so I, you know, I would be worried about, um, just. You know, meeting fatigue.
Yeah, so which, which one of these are required, the M B T A? Um, has a mitigation H P P, those that are required?
Well, the the M V P, there's a major public.
Okay, so that's a critical.
For that, and with the, with that being now short, so one year, so the two years that we proposed.
And then you said the Route one thirteen kind of ties in with the M B T A, so that's.
Is, in my view, it does, but it's it's really, that's a totally locally driven, we're not doing that for anybody other than for our our own benefit. Or our own town's benefit.
It does seem good to have three, so if we were gonna take that one out, which one would you put in to be like the?
If we're gonna take whatever.
The Route one thirteen or?
I wouldn't, if we do it for the combined one, I I wouldn't take that one out. I think that one really lends itself well for getting. Cause there's, you know, it's five miles of corridor, and and uh. Most of the focus in the public meetings to this point has been the the page by state crossing, and that's just one very, very small flipper, and. We, at a staff level, we'd love to get people engaged in that, excited about that, it's a long-term effort, it's gonna take a long time before there's new crosswalks. And your sidewalks, but this is an important, this planning effort is an important uh foundation for all of that.
So each one of those top three bullets would have a fifteen to twenty minutes, and then the other ones would just be tables or boards or things.
Yeah. But after town meeting, it's gonna be a little easier then, and throw the trick in the middle of that.
We're actually looking at between the time the booklet comes out and town meeting, that's kind of a lull right there. Right?
Yeah, I feel well, I'm sorry, Angus, Angus, you got any thoughts?
It's relative thing.
It's very relative, it's a relative.
That's when he takes a nap, so we had that.
It's that Thursday, October fifth, but that's not set.
Yeah.
Set in stone, but but that was the idea, is that the work would be largely done on the packet or on the FinCon booklet, uh.
There are other options, you'd be able to make no notice at town meetings, say to people.
That's right.
You did that one.
Yep.
Beginning like immediately after, right, like the next week.
Yeah, I think it was the next week, like early November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once you get past that, it's it's really hard to get, you know, from mid-November to early January, it's.
Yeah. There's, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. In the fall anyway, but you know, once you get into November, I think. People have a breather in their life, I think we might get more participation.
Yes.
People are committed to fewer things.
Mm-hmm.
Always haven't quite yet.
Right, exactly, a little more prep time would certainly be helpful, we'd do a better job.
Yeah, and 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 really, I think the more advertising, you know, the more visibility that we get, that this is actually gonna happen.
Yeah.
The better.
Yeah.
So. Will you be taking the lead on this, or is it's gonna be Christine and me?
It would, so far Christine is Sue, but I think if we if we decide we're gonna do this, it's, and I've made this really clear at our uh. Kind of working group meetings with with staff, is we all need to work together, we all need to, you know, make sure that. That this is uh kind of the place to be, so that, you know, some of their, um. You know, different staff have different contacts or different segments of the community.
So is this gonna take up your working group meetings?
It would become a real focus, but but right now, we're doing everything more sequentially, so I don't. I, it's it's hard to know, is it more time or less time, we're we're super busy, we're gonna be super busy, and I think if we're, you know, working toward. Something that checks a couple of boxes, I do see some efficiencies, I don't think we're gonna be any less busy, but we might. I think, I think one of the things that we feel could be achieved is. Uh, for the public, you know, to be hearing about things in a cohesive way. Uh, so they understand that the town and the town leadership is looking at the interrelationships of. You know, pedestrian safety and housing growth and and water supply, for instance, um. Cause those are, you know, there's a lot of interrelationships there.
And since it's beginning in November, perhaps the FinCon booklet and the introduction could make no other two.
Yeah. Yeah, and some of these items, you know, either.
You wanna buy a page?
Yeah, we'll we'll sponsor a page.
Yeah, and I think every one of these uh issues, certainly in the top three, but a lot of the others as well. Either came from appropriations or votes that have been made, or and or are leading inevitably to future county meetings.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be. Interesting to to kind of have a section that is more about this, the perspectives for the town.
Yeah.
Wide.
Yeah, I think it sounds good if you can pull it off. I know.
Nothing like a deadline.
Yeah.
No, I like that, I like that a lot, the extra month, I think makes a big difference, but.
Alright.
I know, you know, Rick, you'd express some concern about potentially things getting. Short tripped as opposed to having a dedicated meeting, do you?
Yeah, I I I think that's, there's a lot of stuff going on, I think it's inevitable that's gonna happen, maybe, so we have three primary topics here, and then we have. You know, uh, depending on how you count things, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight, nine. Ten, and then number ten, there's three different parcels, so. There's, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of, you know, unless unless it's a, you know, a six-hour event, and we're buying everybody lunch and dinner. Um. Thank you, it's it's, it's gonna, I just think it's gonna be, but you know. It's a certain amount, more will be conveyed to people than if we didn't do it.
Yeah, yeah, I do think, I think the the give and take is really the the highlighted projects, the others. I think the the objective is more just to make. More people aware of what's already going on, and how they can plug in and learn more.
Yeah.
You know, so so I can see some some of the, you know, committees or, um, work, you know. Putting together like flyers or one-pagers that maybe increase the profile of someone they're already working on, like this, like this old usability study. That wouldn't, there wouldn't be a give and take on that, but there could be a little one-page flyer.
I I think it's, I I think it's a great idea, give it a shot, and we'll see how it works, I mean, I think personally, I think people are, many people. Depends upon who comes in, but, um, I think there is so much here that people may be bewildered by. By this, you know, overload of, you know, that, because we each know all these projects already, they all make sense to us.
Yeah.
But if you don't, if you're not familiar with this stuff at all, well, at least we've heard it about. But if you don't know about this stuff at all, and you walk in, and there's ten or more new projects that you know nothing at all about, it's, you know. It's gonna be, um, overload, but if you don't try, at least, I'm sure we'll have some positive impact.
Mm-hmm, I I I hope so, it's definitely a, you know, something new for this this community, but uh. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity with the, you know, we really, as you know, we've seen a lot of things gel in the last. Two years, but it really is kind of getting better all the time with different department heads really like working as a team, and. I think it's exciting to to have a, you know, pinnacle event, we'll we'll see if we can pull it off, and. Obviously, we involve the boards and committees as well, um, but I think a lot of the department heads are really gonna be taking ownership of that. So good.
How else, how, what's the uh anticipated duration?
Uh, I. Oh, wasn't in here, okay, there was.
Twenty minutes per.
Yeah, I think we were thinking like, um.
Hour and a half.
Three and a half hours, so like five thirty to nine, with with the initial half hour being a drop-in kind of no program, but just people. Milling around, getting a beverage.
And then, and then the fifteen to twenty minute presentations on every forty-five minutes or something, or how how would that be?
Uh, it's it's separate, uh, when Sue had put this together, I tweaked it a little bit for the packet, just cause it had water. As the third item, and I replaced that with a river road, since that's now Dr. Pan, when she did this a few weeks ago, we didn't know about the ground. Um.
But it's only each one of the top few bullets that has the fifteen to twenty.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Right, no, 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 I know, I get that, it's just I'm trying to, because, because there's so much other content. Um, and if you have these fifteen to twenty minute presentations, how do people actually get a chance to break out and and try to absorb some of the content?
How about a half hour at the beginning, a half hour at the end, or an hour at the end, maybe?
And then we just wrap it far, fifteen to twenty minute presentations sequentially?
Yeah.
Well, let Angus and the team work out how they want the program to flow, they have the concept and.
Yeah. Alright, item N.
And every hour, there's a copy even more, right? Round, round.
Alright, semi-regular select board meeting, because we don't have enough news. So, so Chris, your email, you would have been fine saying. Could you please put this on agenda, but you did offer opinions, so.
You commented on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You asked if that was appropriate, it was appropriate to ask her to be on, but not offer your opinions, it's an ongoing education.
I just started sending an email.
Completely insane, I think that's an opinion.
Same in effect.
Yeah, so, um. I think every new select board member like runs up against this wall, and then says, why can't we have five members, because that's the way.
No, I won't say that.
Alright, but so, so the, you referenced the state, um, they don't have a forum issue, right?
Their their level of transparency versus what we have to put up with are two different levels, they're less astounded that they don't buy.
Well, they're able to vote on their own level, yes.
I just find that these meetings are too restrictive, they have open, you know, we got business to get to.
Yeah.
And then I can't pick up the phone and call you, or Rick, I know you call Rick all the time.
Yeah, I just get the frustration, I guess my challenge is adding another meeting, because, you know, that puts. Uh, that there's an impact on staff, on Angus, and whatever other staff member.
Isn't that the show?
Well, it's part of this contract to be here at select board meetings. Well, but if if he's responsible for running the town, I'm sure he would feel a little bit present. Is that, is that fair, Angus?
Yeah, I think even if I didn't go, I would, let's say it was on a Saturday, on Monday, I would spend some portion of Monday. Learning about what happened on Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, a single person can bet you what happened.
Right, right.
But back, back, that was, sorry, that was just like, sorry about, you know, yeah, right.
So, so your intent would be to talk about things that you can't talk about in the meeting, or just not have time for?
We just don't have time, just to get to this agenda, I, you know, we could expound on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe you come back and say, did we do a good job with this, we don't evaluate it, don't even, there's a whole lot of things, what should take going forward, what should we be looking at, you know? Um. This is, this is treading water just to get through these agendas.
Right.
So.
Right.
Uh, we can pass on it, I just find it frustrating. There's gotta be some other way to accommodate it.
Yeah, there there is. Um, you gotta remember that if you guys are. Still dealing with a whole bunch of. Detail work. And if we can strengthen the town manager form of government. You might have less in front of you as as related to detailed work. I mean, it is the thing, I mean, the trade-off is how you act as a board. As opposed. as opposed to, you know, whether you're in there also doing a lot of the work. My observation has always been that the select board is, is a burden to shore. But that's just because the way we go over the governor in this small town, it truly hit ourselves. Town manager form of government, there's a lot of stuff, because other than you reviewing it from an overview point of view, there's a lot more decisions that are made, and then everything just goes forward. So you can look at your agenda, cut it in half if you add a little different form of government. And then part of it is because we have elected boards that also have to be, you know. So it's it's just we're, we're not efficiently set up for you guys to be a true board.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
I agree. I mean, one of the things I was talking about with Angus is the idea of getting a management consultant to to help us look at how we, you know, what's on our agenda, you know, what are, how we handle these projects, because we can prioritize projects that we want, but I I don't feel like we're ever going to have, you know, it should seem impossible. I've spent some time looking at other select board agendas, and I don't think all boards meet until 11 o'clock, you know? And I I just feel like I'm not capable of holding it down. I don't know how to, I don't want to cut anything out, you know?
Well, I think part of our problem is the town's in a good place, both with employees and business, so it gives you the opportunities to deal with this many projects. And so they'll hit the table at the same time.
Right.
But you got them, just because you have the ability to do something, you should sometimes. We're gonna get some of these completed and off the table before we throw all this up there.
Or rein in, or rein in or.
Yeah, but I mean, every time Angus and I meet before a meeting, we're continually pushing stuff over to the next meeting. And I've never, so, you know, when we get caught up, there's gonna be new stuff. So I feel like structurally, we need some help to try to figure out how to make this transition.
We got a lot of big projects right now, though, between water and the bridge, those those kind of things. Well, yeah, a lot, a lot to get sorted out, right? There's a lot off the table.
Yeah, we also, we also have a very active community that like sustainability. There's a lot of stuff that we work on, basic species, all that stuff which everybody wants. But then it, it just adds more to it. I mean, think of your agendas and these things that, I don't know if they're, I'm not saying we shouldn't be getting them, we should. But I just think that some of it needs to come off people right in turn. Meaning low of our town manager would benefit us all.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
I do think we, you know, as a community, you know, we're punching above our weight for, you know, for a community that decides, you know? And, you know, that's because, you know, we have a committed staff, committed town manager, you know? I mean, it's it's not, you know.
And the volunteers.
Yeah, right, and the volunteers. I mean, both we have, you know, we do have an absolute full amount of stuff going on, which forces that stress to everybody who's trying to, you know, as a responsible, get more work done. But so, you know, at some point, you know, can we just set our sights lower? I don't think that's what we want to do, but.
Well, I think you're meant to prioritize things with different timeframes, that's all.
Yeah.
The agenda, if you get everything back, I don't know if anybody reads everything foolish enough to do that. It's, it's overwhelming.
I I attracted, but I generally, you know, I give it the end.
Couple of pages I skim, but yeah. When you try and read it and digest it, yeah. Even just this one agenda is staggering, overwhelming.
Yeah.
This is a typical agenda, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not really.
Well, it's not typically, especially like.
Yeah, there was some, that was a larger item.
Yeah, yeah.
There was backup, but I think in terms of the number of items, I think it is typical.
And it's the same mix of decision ending.
But these are big items to look at, the solo, to get through that solo and the, that was a lot.
Yeah.
The water studies at the, there's a lot there. Even though you read it, that doesn't make an assessment of it. That's, you know, like going back and forth and you hoping you get it, so.
Again, I would, I would just, I mean, I think you're all asking the right questions. I'm sure that Angus has some opinions too, even though he's been making sound. But but, you know, think of it as a board versus a CEO, and you guys are having more stuff come to your desk than a board to a group. And I'm not talking about a select board, you know, just in general, if you look at the order of dates, and that's why I think going outside, someone might be able to help you, might even say, well, you know, how come this ended up?
Why?
Yeah, right, right. I I used to, so I used to sit there and 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 just, curb cuts? And dogs? And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, select, this is a select board, curb cuts and dogs? Really, that used to be what the agendas were, and we've evolved past that in a level of complexity. But again, you know, what should be hitting your desk? Or what should you be relying on for the staff, to become a good staff, to produce, if given that level of power?
Right.
Which goes on in other towns.
Yeah.
You know?
So what what do you guys think about the idea of working to get in outside? Because I don't feel equipped to say what things we need to, you know, cut out or.
Don't even know how to set that at this point.
Well.
Yeah, I'm not, it's funny.
We we've been doing this as long as I've been on the board, I'm sure it was before. And it's not, it's not right to meet from 5:30 to 11:00, you know? It's not good for staff, it's not good for us. And I don't know that it's that efficient for the town, because, you know, after a certain point, I feel like I'm not productive. Like right now, when Green is kind of rushing.
But yeah, kind of rapid, I'm still doing it.
Yeah. So I would like to at least look into this. Angus knows a couple of people that that he's, or he was a working person, that he's participated in permission.
Would this be somebody, given Angus, that put the agendas together?
No, I mean, kind of a structural, I mean, I would envision maybe the person could meet with each one of us individually and then maybe as a group, just to try to get a feeling.
Yeah, and how how do we calibrate what we're doing with the resources we have? And I I think the form of government is absolutely not the core of all of it. And I think if you go back to to Powell and Lannan, by whom that town manager draft was written, I think there are a couple of reasons for that. One of those is the people who are actually closely involved with crafting that legislation. You know, I think, you know, had had interest of of kind of keeping the manager on a short leash. And I think part of that was also driven by the community and and what they felt and probably were right was needed in order to get the form of government changed at all, was to be able to assure voters that, you know, you're not gonna have someone who's gonna come in and go rogue, just if we ran an act line C into the legislation that absolutely make make sure that can't happen. But the effect of that, Rob's right, there's a lot of things that go to this board for votes that that I've not seen in other towns as board issues. And so that does take a certain amount of time to prepare for, and and it can have the effect of, you know, making things messier. It's the outcome better, sometimes it is, because four heads are better than than one. So that's the kind of the trade off that Rob was alluding to. But I think form of government is a challenge. I can tell you, you know, as I look back over my, you know, five years here, you know, the board meetings are typically about 40 a year. And so between preparing for, ending, and following up from the meetings, that ends up comprising a huge amount of time for from me personally and from support staff. Where we are now and with the staff that we have now, I would, I feel that one thing I, as much as we're doing more of this, I can't find enough time, is these working group meetings with multiple staff and department heads. There's a lot that, I think there's a lot more progress that could be made during the working hours during the day between meetings than currently happens right now, because so much focus is on the evening board meetings. So it just, it it just, you know, draws time and attention toward these meetings rather than keeping staff memorized, you know? And it's a lot of time coming out of these meetings, just letting everybody know what went on at the meeting and what they need to know. It's a major amount of time, probably more than than you might realize. So I'd love to get to where we could have not just my office, but staff in general more empowered to carry out the agenda that the board and the voters have set, rather than, you know, all all of the littler decisions going, you know, to to the board. It's it's very inefficient, it takes away from what we can do. We continue to deliver, I believe. But it takes, like, the typical work week is just way, way, way beyond full time. And that's every week, you know, for more than five years. And there has to be a point where kind of, you know, enough is enough. Like, I can't sleep at night at Friday night. Like, I put in a very, very long work week and Friday night, I'm like, my mind's racing. I can't relax, because there's so many loose ends. And I feel like there's, you know, that definitely takes a toll. And and there's, you know, there's a lot of cost to that, that, you know, we're continuing to deliver. But it's it's really not sustainable. And it hasn't even for a long, long time. And so, you know, I think people like, you know, Wayne, I think did a similar thing, where he just kept delivering, kept delivering. But he was working unbelievable hours to make that all go. And, you know, he was made procurement officer, and and, you know, it just, it it just the time. It it's just, it 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 doesn't leave me with a lot of work, workplace satisfaction, even though we're doing good work. But it's 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 very demoralizing, because I feel like we're further behind every Friday than we were Monday morning, despite having like put in absolutely, you know, totally focused effort. You know, there's no, at least for my own schedule, there's no chit chat, there's no like casual, like I am on point every minute that I'm here. And that doesn't, I think, make me the best manager of people, because I don't have that like genial downtime to like even necessarily get to know people who was 20 or their last, because I'm so deadline driven. So it's just, it's very difficult. That's where I think, you know, Wendy just suggested some kind of management itself. And there's lots of small towns, lots of them. I think we are exceptional, but there's others that are exceptional, that are also punching above their weight. And they're managing to do it presumably without, you know, 40 or 42 board meetings a year. You know, my colleagues in in nearby towns look at me like I have two heads when I talk about like the duration and frequency of our meetings. They're like, how do you get work done? I'm like, well, I I work a lot of hours.
Angus, within the list of priorities that we did, is the one topic, the form of government, few town manager, the whole thing. That was A1, and that's one priority.
Yeah.
And if that's what's causing the logjam for you, that should really float to the top and be one of the priorities that we have to deal with. I mean, if we need to bring in a manager to help assign too, that's a bigger picture issue, I think.
Yeah.
Probably sets a long term thing, you know?
Well, field satisfaction will be longer.
Yeah.
So and the timing is good. I very much understood what you said about the, when they established it, the people were here. And that I heard a lot of that static in the background. At the event here, you got a track record, I think people are comfortable, they know that this can work. And it's gotta get laid, it's gotta get rolled out at some point, so. If you gotta pick one priority.
I could just say one thing going to what Angus just said. And and I I think someone coming out organizationally and looking after us is is the way to go as long as you get the right person. I mean, we are authority, but Taylor and Howard Ray studies that Orion people. But but driving the work down is is the way I look at it. Driving the work down, and you got a town manager who should be able to, and has staff to accomplish a ton, if 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 they can get unleashed.
Yeah, if they're empowered to.
If they're empowered, right.
But I think before we, you know, make a change like that, I would like to get some support on that.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But it's it's driving the work down.
Absolutely.
Half the stuff that you see in your agenda shouldn't even be.
Yeah, I agree.
That's it.
Yeah. So if you guys are agreeable to it, I would like to ask Angus to start making some inquiries about the particular person that he's had experience with, if he's not available or doesn't do this kind of assistance for me, and yet some recommendation.
You plan with that?
Or the person who, you know, Wendy just said you had some experience with, where was that?
Sue in in Westford, and I I probably mentioned this over the years, but I was a management consultant named Mark Wade. He's based in Carlin, LA. He's swift, really brilliant guy. The the town manager in Westford brought him in to run a leadership management training for, she started with 10 senior department heads, you know, myself, police chief, you know, people like that. And it went, it was a 10 week rigorous course. That's not what I envisioned here, but this guy was so good that he had ever eaten out of his hand. Like, all of the department heads ranging from the, you know, kind of Groff Highway Superintendent to the much more like bookish, you know? I I don't know, he just really, he was so knowledgeable. And, yeah, he came and worked with with this group of senior department heads and the manager for a 10 week course. We had class every Wednesday. And again, this scope is not what I envisioned here, but the guy was really, really good. And and then it went so well that she went back and got more money and did this kind of next tier of department heads who were. And and it 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 really was helpful. And so part of what I feel, where where at the end of the day or at the end of the week, I feel consistently, especially for the last, you know, six or seven weeks, I felt just isn't getting the time. It's for instance, the D W transition is a huge thing we're trying to do. And I think it's a good thing, and I think it's gonna work out well. But, you know, I'm meeting individually with, you know, each of the four affected staff, but it's more, you know, keeping things on track or, you know, the specific projects work. There's not even time to get into like the job descriptions or bring forward to you guys what the wage structure should be, and never mind like proposing a position at the union, initiating that. Like, there just isn't the bandwidth. And and so one thing I mentioned to Wendy is, I want to make sure, I mean, those are some jobs where they have changed and are continuing to change, but there's a number of other jobs in the last five years where there's been significant changes to staff's responsibilities. One example, and and this was actually going really well, so maybe not a great example, but when I started, you know, regular chair of the energy committee, and you came to me early in my time and said, you know, Green Communities, annual reporting and tracking and all that, you've been doing it as a volunteer for many, many years. And you said this happened to be a town staffer job. It took a couple of years to get there, but we did get there, and we now have someone really good. But there's a lot of things like that, things that maybe no one had been doing, that now someone has to do. Or things like insurance, which I've been doing the best I could. Rebecca's now doing most of that to where I can just kind of review things and sign them instead of doing everything. She's putting a lot of time towards insurance. So so that tells me, even though I was doing the best I could for a few years, I probably wasn't doing everything I should have, because she's finding there's a lot to do that. So so I want to make sure that on on the other end of all this, you know, where we just went through the wage study and 45 new job descriptions, I want to make sure on the other end of that that every staffer and certainly the department heads know exactly what their department is expected to do and feel that they have the resources and the training to do that. And that's not a foregone conclusion. I think there are, you know, we have a number of people who are really adaptable and keeping up. Like, really, you throw them a new thing and they they get it and they they deliver. But that's different from like getting the organization to where the routine stuff is routine. We're still, you know, something like the, you know, the lease for for children's staff or for learning tree. It feels like every time we do it, I mean, we have so many different staff than we had the last time we did it a couple of years ago. So, you know, I'm more personally involved, and and that's the case on a lot of things, because they're not yet routine, or we're redoing them every time that issue comes up. And I want to get to where we can really make the simple stuff simple. And and part of that's not having probably as much go for a board vote, because if the policy is clear, it shouldn't need that. Think of how many policies we've tried, you know, we've rewritten in the last few years, and how many more are on our list to do what, to do list, you know, to rewrite policies and to make things clear. That's a lot of work, you know? When I started with the 19 financial policies, and I know that the former board thought we could just, all those in favor, just vote them all out. That's not the right way to do it, that's not how we did it. But the end result of that is, I think we've got 11 done, there's eight that we haven't even gotten to yet, that's been five years. So the backlog's huge, and I think a management consultant could help us, you know, working with key department. you know, working with key department heads, especially those who have seen a lot of changes and responsibilities, to make sure that they are totally comfortable with what they're expected to do. And if we need to get people more training, we can do that. I do the best I can with that. I think I do a a a decent job. But the fact is I'm chained to my desk like, you know, many, many hours just delivering on my personal workload. So that doesn't allow me to be as hands-on as a manager as I really like to be. Um, and and we have to change that because it's.
Yeah. Yeah. So Chris, I I didn't mean to be dismissive of this because I think, you know, having conversations that aren't just driven by the agenda are important, evaluating what we're doing. But to me, the way to do that is to kind of push some of this stuff off the agenda. Your staff, you know, I mean, that's how I would see that. Okay. So, oh, have Angus look into that and so at the next time, okay. Um, so did you have recommendations regarding the?
I didn't, uh, no, I I didn't really have time to put that together. So.
All right.
Thank you. I I I will.
No, no, no. If you're gonna pass it, that could be a really low item. So thank you.
Okay, okay.
So then the next.
Yeah, that almost should be a zombie.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, not almost, it really, it should be a zombie.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. The purpose of last week or last thing was just to kind of get it out there.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question before I move on? This is about a prior item. Do we anticipate at the fall town meeting asking for wanting to reduce the tax rate?
Uh, we haven't put together the recap model, but that's a good thing to have a placeholder.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lower your tax.
It's all about you, Rick.
I know. I I you know what? They're both better.
Rob likes paying tax. Makes it feel like it helps toward more.
Yeah, we have that.
All right. Stay on focus here. Next item. Uh, we need to assign somebody to each board of the meeting. So I just put the ones we've already talked about. This is on page one eleven. I also think it'd be good to assign somebody to the boards that are elected, just to try to keep tabs on what's happening. So you guys either volunteer or I'm assigning you.
Well, you don't assign. I'm worried about that. You just said normal meetings, but if we go to the, there's multiple meetings.
I talked about meetings that impact Angus and staff. The the all these other meetings are an hour. They're not like our meeting.
I have four meetings in two days last week. We don't have that in for many more.
I.
Wendy, I need to go ahead and change the header to liaison. You had it as designated.
Okay.
And and I mean, speaking for myself, I I wouldn't envision board members going to all these more just being the touchstone so that if that.
I think I don't say every meeting, but.
Yeah, you know, being a a presence and being a resource, but I think that could be as much as that could be an outreach to the chair.
Yeah.
Just that they instinct, um, because I think it would be daunting to throw this three-member board to try to cover.
It would be easy. We just each add another six meetings a month. Okay.
All right. What about board fire?
Actually, there's another ten meetings a month.
All right. If you vol- either volunteer or I'm assigning. Chris, right now you only have two, so you need to.
One more than I need.
All right. Is anybody interested in board fire meetings?
I agree.
They meet once a year.
No, they actually meet a little.
Twice a year.
I'll I'll go to that.
All right. Are you writing this down, Jim? Would you please? Okay. Cable advisory.
What do they need? You know, you say one year.
They don't have a standard.
They don't have a standing name, but.
You have like a month?
No.
Steve, they they ju- they just met. Usually it's when things come up. That's usually what it is.
They just met, so.
You could you could not see them again for a couple of weeks.
If you're gonna volunteer, just not volunteer if I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to waste more of your time.
Oh, great. All right. Do does anybody have an interest in cable advisory committee? I've been going to the meetings and I can contain unless somebody is interested in it. All right. All right, Rick, you're C I C, C C R C, um, C P C. You volunteered for the conservation commission, right?
I worked about last week.
Good. What about council on aging or cultural council?
Council on aging is usually daytime meetings.
Okay.
Um, and cultural council meet very infrequently. Um, they they're like a segment of the year when that money comes to the table, but the cultural council simply because the the first thing I want to get done.
All right. What about council on aging? Anyone to do that as well? Great. I can't. Did you need to? The longer it takes to volunteer, the longer the meaning goes. All right.
I I I I can go to.
All right, I'm assigning Chris. Council on Aging.
You may have a show up.
Yeah, I think it's keep your ear to the ground, really, you know?
Yeah. Harbor Committee, we're.
I believe they're served lunch or snacks at some time every meeting, Chris.
I throw up there news like because I don't want to feel.
Oh, come on. Harbor Committee, we're probably dissolving that, right? We need to assign somebody to that.
Well, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah.
I I I think I've done all their meetings.
Well, and so let me also say that one of the other things for me was one about going to these meetings instead of any is to help them cut down on the evening meetings. So, um, that's another reason to do this.
Be great to get them to have a beer.
Yeah. All right, I can volunteer for that.
Because you don't have meetings?
No, because somebody needs to get them going to get this resolved. So I'll do that. Um, what about historic district commission or historical commission?
I'm gonna claim what's the difference of the two.
Historical district commission is the training field.
It's specifically only for the training field. It's a regulatory commission.
There's there's some overlap in membership between the two, but.
Uh, there is actually.
I'll do the historic commission if you want and.
All right.
District.
Right. Rick, any interest in the training field?
No.
All right, I'll take that one. Uh, Mill Pond Committee. I I would like to fold that into open space committee, just putting it out there, but the chair is is leaving in October, so that committee thing blocks.
The chair.
But with the block, I mean, well, that's great. All right, open space, Mill Pond Committee.
Make too much more.
So are you keeping track, Jim? I usually go to the open space committees meetings, so I can.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah. All right, put me on open space, please. Advisory committee, that's going. River access committee, that's kind of the launch, right? Is that gonna continue? That's another one I should be holding into the open space committee.
Yeah, absolutely. That shouldn't be a thing.
All right. What about the trade committee? Yeah, I'm not taking.
They they always, they always meet very.
Okay, great. Rachel, Chris. All right.
It's a force to me.
So Whittier School Committee, I don't even know who to contact. I didn't send questionnaires to them. I don't even know what that is.
So that's cool.
Chip in Whittier.
Oh, yeah.
Chip, Chip O'Connor.
Okay.
Um, who I don't know, who has been on the board for a while.
That's very nice. He's a super nice guy.
So Chris, that seems like right up your own school committee. Yeah, you don't get to just like say nah or what.
I'll take it. I just hope that's easy.
All right. Well, let's at least assign people on every channel. Is only board of appeals? Where, how does that sound to you?
Um, they don't meet very frequently. They don't, sure. They they only meet when there is a liberal vibe.
All right. And then what about the elected boards in your news, board of health?
How are they gonna feel about that? My question is.
I've been to several of the meetings. I don't care. Well, so what do they do? It's an open meeting.
I've got to want to.
Yeah.
Board of Health meetings.
No, but telling them to have any liaison is that that's.
This is an internal decision that we're making for our board. You don't have to get there by. You want to continue with the board?
Um.
For water commissioners, so pick pick two of these. I'll do the planning board. Our parking rack. Do you want to do the plan?
Yeah, we're all, we're all, we're all, uh, uh, ex, you know, planning board.
All right. Kristen's taking the planning board, Jim. I'll take parks and rec. What you're doing water commissioner, right?
Yeah.
I re-trustees, I can do. Board of health, you or?
Um.
No? All right, I don't think we're trying to. All right, how many do I have? Fifteen?
Given given this, this stuff that's coming up about the, um, Chris.
Nine.
Pretty much.
Wendy has nine.
I I.
How many? I have seven. How many is Chris up?
Two.
Two, three. It's not going any.
Six. I'm kind of six.
Seven, eight, two, three, one, two, three, four, five. I have eight.
They're correct.
Seven, so I.
All right, that's reasonable.
So board of health meets during the day.
Usually four thirty.
Later, later.
I heard you say you don't have to go to the meetings. You just have to be the liaison.
Well, I would encourage you to at least show up.
Top of chairs.
Yeah.
So I I I have six, Chris has six to go. I'll I'll I'll. You can shed one.
So the next request is.
Yeah.
We could each get the chair's email on deck. Put these later.
Okay, all right. So did we get everybody?
I'm listening. Then I just took a, I did that. Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, minutes. Um, the first one, first paragraph, regular business, item A. If there's a way down, talking about Westbury's municipal employees operating on robust, up-to-date job description. I just wasn't sure what that referred to.
Oh, what paragraph?
It's the first paragraph, three quarters of the way down, the end of the sentence. Um, the end of that, the right-hand margin. Municipal employees who are operating on robust, up-to-date jobs.
I know the the point I was making was that, uh, many staff are basically full-time busy or close to it just based on the, you know, western description, never mind the expert style.
Okay. You want to apply that, James?
You want me to drop the word, rip off?
Uh, yeah, and up to date, that doesn't seem like.
Well, it seems like that word ought to be very full, up-to-date job description.
Well, up to date is not really part, I mean, it's not really part of the thing.
So. Operating on job descriptions, robots, job description. You want me to just remove the line?
I don't know, Angus.
Uh, I can, I can, we can.
Okay.
All right, um, anything else on that that meeting? Have a motion approved and amended?
Uh, yeah.
All right, second, all of the paper. All right. Like the next meeting, this is the, um.
First thing I'd note there is that, um, Mark Dickinson is first, his his last name is Dickinson, um, and he's the owner's representative. Yeah. Or representative for the owner. That's not presented.
Uh, under item E. Uh, so just the the middle sentence doesn't make sense. It starts the expense in the middle of the page. I don't know. Learning of Shania could possibly even be less than before. With the benefit of admitting the job, I actually feel like we're already done. I think it should be. Um, I don't know.
All right, skip. Mark, I have to teach an hour.
Yeah.
I didn't help him. Yes, okay.
You just take a look at that sentence in the middle of paragraphs. That's even more fine, as appropriate, why not? Did you have something before that, Chris?
Yeah, indeed. Um, there is a way down, said while confirmed that the offices of the union would not be a major player in the usage and procurement of cameras. That's not what it was, that they were not opposed. And there was no conditions attached.
Okay.
Basically, that's on, the union is in favor of the cameras and not.
Completely unrelated, well, related, but completely off topic. There was an article which I didn't get a chance to read yet, hopefully I will, and today's New York Times about the um, cameras and police and 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 other municipalities issues regarding
I heard that.
Police pushback, yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it yet, but.
Okay, anything else? Any notes?
Yeah.
Oh, uh.
Jay.
Yeah. It wasn't the death of a T and a Howard engineer, it was the subcontractor.
Yeah, the subcontractor.
Well, it's one play.
Yeah.
I have to pull it line up. Jim already got it.
Why?
Think about that. Yeah.
Sorry, Chris. Uh, meeting claimed to discredit DMing article.
Yeah, I know.
Um, on item K, um, Jennings stating that an inventory of Blaney's turtles, that's not what she's doing. She's a county move kill.
That could be around speed bumps, though.
She, I don't think she's equipped to do inventory of Blaney's turtles, like a high-level specialty.
They go in, peeing off the mud.
Yeah. She's counting mouse skeleton, snake vertebra.
Mouse pelts is the.
All right, anything else there? Motion approved and amended?
Uh, yeah.
Some paper? All right, all right. All right, cue Angus, you're on.
Okay, I'll keep these brief. Uh, we, uh, received, uh, drafts, uh, about a week or two ago. I've got it on the screen here. We, part of the scope was to put together face maps of the entire corridor. Uh, this is for the one thirteen planning effort. And so we just got these recently. There are a couple of refinements that that I know I see and I'm sure others on staff will see as well. I didn't include these because each one's like thirteen megs, um, but, uh, I can either email them as separate files or put them up on the web. But there are a couple of things, like it doesn't show the crossblocker page, I think. But anyhow, it, these are, the idea is to get like really good face maps with not a whole lot of information, but really all the sidewalks and crosswalks. So that when we have public events, um, people can kind of visualize what they're talking about with sticky notes or or even mark things up with a marker just to start to get some.
Like problem areas?
Yeah, problem areas.
So what does the blue signify?
Uh, blue is crosswalk, uh, green is sidewalk. So I just want to make you aware, these were received, um, yeah, like I said, we'll we'll have a couple of adjustments before we kind of go live, but but it's it's, uh, it's moving along. It's nice to have like a nice, uh, base map for the corridor study.
Angus, excuse me for a second. Can you just share your screen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So, uh, this is for the one thirteen study that covers the entire line from, uh, town to town, so. Uh, and then also in the packet you had, there was, uh, we submitted the, we officially submitted the, uh, paperwork to DOT for the twenty-five percent of time for a make for the page, plant state cropping. Uh, so that was all I had on on that project. Uh, the, uh, item R, I didn't have anything in the packet. We did have, we've had a couple of really good discussions with G and app recently regarding the page school study. We had a Zoom meeting with them, I think a week ago, Friday, about ten days ago, Rick was on there. Uh, I think we're all very pleased with how the work is proceeding. They're they've spent several full days in the building and they're working with, uh, Penn Tuck facilities staff and they're now getting started as well on the more qualitative educational, uh, adjustment of the building and how it works and what works well and what doesn't work as well. Uh, but we have a lot of confidence that they're right on track with the scope and timeline that we put together. Uh, we had a somewhat impromptu onsite meeting involving Tuesday, last Tuesday. Uh, Rick sat in for part of that, but I was with the building inspector myself, Christine Wallace, as well as, uh, uh, Greg, uh, Greg Hatten was there. And, uh, and, but that's, uh, we're looking at getting them to do the assessment of the, uh, we've been calling them lentils. It's actually the sills. Uh, because since they're spending all this time there and and, uh, so we're looking at actually a separate contract with them to actually get that work kind of, uh, uh, moving forward because that's got, I think, an F Y twenty-four sunset date. And we think, we know they can add some real value there.
It was kind of interesting. It was pure luck and happy stance that they have some expertise, some pretty good expertise in in that area. Luck and habit stance that they have some expertise, some pretty good expertise in, in that area of understanding major structures and.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, most failure.
Have we not already contracted somebody for that, I thought?
No. No.
We budgeted for it, but.
Yeah, we got, we got their funding approved, uh, by, you know, five.
And just never went up to.
Around, right, yeah. Uh. So, yeah, that's coming along, I, I mentioned to Wendy the other day, we, we penciled in October sixteenth as of the, for the, for GNAP to present to this board. That would be an overview of the study as well as, uh. Looking for some direction on, uh, as they. Move toward the home stretch, uh, because they're. Looking to finish that report by the end of the calendar year. Uh, the next item, Max, uh, Max had attended this meeting while Jim was out of, out of the country, or out of town, I should say, uh, off, off the.
I was out of country.
Okay, yeah. Yes. Yes, okay.
It is a different country.
Okay. And that should go.
Geographies don't use ones.
No, definitely not. Um, did you want to say anything about that? I mean, it's, Sam, or, uh, Max put this together, it's, it's.
I, I don't know if you guys have ever dealt with this before, but, um, the way usually this goes is. They go, they go every single town individually and go to their town meeting and get it passed. But it has to be a hundred percent agreeance, so they thought the easiest way to do it would be that a district-wide election. Which operate under very different rules from regular elections.
Feels like a switch and B, I mean, this is.
So it's, it's the collective vote of the district. Not the individual towns, like, so like, if five towns said no, four towns said yes, the five towns win, no, it's. Collective yes and no votes between all of the communities. Um, it's, it only can run for eight hours maximum, so it's not, so, uh, as you can see in the notes, it's going to be from eleven AM to seven. So if you don't. If you're not going to be in town, you can do an absentee ballot, but they can't do early voting like regular elections. A complicated process that's a remnant of an MGL that exists.
Hmm.
Um, but the, the main important thing is we're going to have a fifth election. In twenty twenty-four. On top of two town meetings and anything else that goes on, that's in twenty twenty-four.
I think the main thing is how they've changed the way the vote is, and I find that incredibly offensive. They. It's manipulated so that it'll pass because Haverhill, Newbury, or Nathan and Oakport, our votes are insignificant.
It was always an option, it's just the way it is now.
But every other vote, every other vote. Has gone down differently.
Yeah. So they, they felt that this was the best way to pass, but.
Yeah.
They, that, that being said, uh, if this does not pass, it doesn't mean it fails altogether, they could come back again. With another election if they so chose, or they could come back in the, in the, um. Spring to every single town meeting and try it that way, so the, this is just the first bite of the apple. It's going to be about a month after they get the approval from the state, if they get the approval from the state. Um, which we, I think they would, um, it'll be a month after it backs. So that's the first bite of the apple, if it fails, then you try again in the spring.
You just kind of vote until it passes.
Well, yeah, so how many?
That's, it's unlimited. And, but they pay for everything.
But, and also with the MSBA process, uh, the, uh.
And they're, they're, so it has to be, a positive vote has to be taken for a certain time period.
Okay.
Uh, and it doesn't say you can't have ten native votes, it says you just need a lot of the vote.
Hmm.
Uh, but this is, I think, we just had an override, give us, we're in two of the towns right here. Uh, I think S S Aggie just had an override, this is not a override, Haverhill has had an override, it's a lot, come on.
So what is the potential exposure to West Newbury's tax base on this? What you said, three hundred and eighty million dollar project or four twenty something, crazy?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure on the impact. Um, all I know is, it's going to cost us about three thousand five hundred dollars additionally, that's why I'm putting that article on.
How much?
Three thousand five hundred.
Over the goal.
Just about.
Two thousand five hundred, I'll pay that, let me.
I, I know, I know.
That was your tax bill.
Um, I can get a updated number from, yeah, they had shared that with us a while back, uh. What the total cost, I want, wasn't it like over four hundred dollars?
Four twenty, then, they're going to pay a certain percentage, but it's still massive, and I don't know what our percentage is.
Our, our percentage is actually quite small, um.
Still going to be. Six hundred and change.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's quite small of a huge number.
Right, but, yeah, it's.
We just have to understand what the state's going to commit percentage-wise. Uh, and then a lot of factors, and then.
And we, we are going to be having another meeting in October, um, just to kind of review where everyone's at. They, it's, so everything's supposed to be fully reimbursable, and then they said, well, not now, it's fully reimbursable. Um, so like, for example, they can choose to have, we're lucky we only have one precinct, Haverhill has twenty-one. And so if they said you're only going to have one precinct in Haverhill to go vote that, which is legal to do, um, then. Who's going to notify all voters, there's only one? Haverhill said, well, we're going to have to do that, they're going to reimburse us, but I said, probably not. So then it's questionable about what they need to reimburse. I, I did up the numbers, it's about three thousand five hundred dollars-ish, and that would reimburse every meeting that we. Would function for an election.
So you would still need to ask the money at all town meeting?
To prompt the money, but from the N B A.
Okay, all right.
So I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with the business office to see if they have updated numbers, uh, or at least can send, uh, you know, what they previously sent, but. I bet they have updated numbers, uh. So that's something that's, uh.
And we'll have the ability to take those updated numbers down to our level.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's the important thing.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Uh, next thing, I, I mentioned earlier with the, uh, invasive species, this has been a little frustrating to see, uh, you know, we. Really pushed to get a contract in place with Bender and doing the procurement and all that. But there's a lot of permitting that's involved with, with the invasive species consultant actually doing this removal work, and, uh. I heard from Michelle late this afternoon, uh, as of now, now there's still no D E P file number issued for this notice of intent because of this, the commission is honey, or closed the hearing. And issued order of conditions, uh, so that earliest that they, they'd be able to issue an order of conditions at their next meeting. Uh, which is two weeks out, followed by a ten-day appeal period, uh. Meaning the students' work could actually start in the field on September twenty-first, so Michelle and I, uh, spent some time talking about this, I think our big tech takeaway is that. You know, for future initiatives like this, we need to build that into the timeline and really into the project, because. She's taken it on herself to do a lot of this work, and, uh, it's something that, uh, it's difficult with all her computing, uh. Uh, projects and deadlines, so, uh, there's a significant permitting aspect for the invasive species.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot in the permit that has been packed in the stuff that's in here, it's a lot. Now, how, how do the interns differ than this? They didn't have any permitting.
Correct, uh.
Because they weren't operating in wetlands, they weren't using herbicide.
No, they were cherry gels, that's why most of their operating.
Um. No, they were not.
They weren't operating outside of that.
Not using chemicals, they're not professional, no, they're not.
I have more interns.
It's that easy.
Intern Incorporated.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, here's a line there, yeah, uh. Let's see.
I mean, I, I wonder if this is something we can continue to fulfill, you know, the invasive effort. Um, because it's a huge drain on Michelle's time.
Yeah.
I mean, going forward, I don't know what we can do this.
All right, uh, next one, I included the, uh, this is the memo we got from David Howard, relative to MBTA communities, one of the things we're really. Need to get our hands on from David Howard is this, uh, model that they got, it's in the hydraulic study, uh. So that we can ideally do our own scenario running based on location of the proposed development.
Have we confirmed that we will actually get a model?
Uh, I haven't talked to them, it, it's in the report, yeah.
That's what it says, but I, I just. I don't know if what they mean is they built a model and they will run it for us if we probably want to.
That's how I read it, yeah, now I, I, it's on the list, but, yeah. Uh, but one thing that was lacking from this report, because it doesn't exist as of this, as of their writing of this, was, uh. Ethnic unit count or veteran count in the potential loan areas.
Which is weird.
And that, well, because the, the Dawson Flinker hadn't come up with that yet, so they're presenting their work at the planning board meeting on the fifth.
I thought we had a number like seventy-nine?
Yeah, it's like eighty-seven zone units, but whether that's in one location or spread in multiple locations, I don't know, so.
Well, there's also a question too, what the veteran distribution is in the units.
Sure, there is, and that's not knowable, but you weren't making assumptions on that.
As long as you're clear on the assumption, it's fine, uh, but we would like this, before that report is, is finalized, we'd like to see it. Updated, they included, uh, you know, so it totally dovetails with the work that Dawson Flinker's doing. Uh, we did get our first invoice for this, and it was, and we did structure this on a time and material basis, and it was only for. I think probably, um, thirty-five or forty percent of the total of reading and out, so they, they, there is a fair amount. Left in that arena, so.
Question, Chris?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions in the front. It was really strange reading through this, because we're looking back here earlier. West Newbury's got a problem with water, we don't have enough water for our residents, we're buying it from Newbury Wood. And now they want to throw in eighty-seven more units without water. It just seems so. Counterproductive, and the state is forcing it on you, and it just. Um, probably two years ago when they started this MBTA community thing, I was, Ken Cronin was chair of the. Planning board, I was talking to him about it, he agreed, at one point they were just going to walk away and say. The funding wasn't worth the, the, the cost here, I know the state is now looking to. Litigate if you haven't, uh. You're not going to participate, that's another issue, but it's just kind of. Really awkward, you don't have water, and they're telling you to throw more units from you. You can't even provide what you have, so that. Second comment. Is three properties, Mullin Dunn and Nap. And that kind of bothers me in the fact that we own Mullin, that's fine if you're looking at debt. We're going down the same path we did with Dole Place. To prove that a property has a high monetary value without a. Option in place to acquire at some point, so.
Well, we don't have to go the property, that's the way we do it. Always do the zoning, we're just changing zoning.
So the town will get involved and they need to go, it's just the zoning. Okay, and my last question, then, in summation, they come and they say, uh, Nap's is best because it closes to. The tank, so why aren't they looking at the Craven property, it's like five feet away from the tank? That would have seemed to be, and Hillary, what was her name, um, Stanley.
Harriet.
Harriet Stanley, a number of years ago was looking to put a couple of units on that property. So it has the potential capability for it, seems to be the biggest one they've missed, why are we?
Angus, do you know why they didn't include that? There's got to be a reason.
I know it was, it was definitely one of the sites we looked at on the initial drive-around with the consultants, which was, was like a half a day, uh, and that was a couple of months ago. Uh, I haven't been to, you know, all the planning board meetings, where it's just a Scott, I know that they, the direction of, of these three general locations was provided by the planning board. So I. Expect they have a reason, but I don't, I don't.
Which is playing for the other day.
So you can ask it next week, Chris.
But I'll, I'll, I'll ask you about that, uh. Why?
Anything else, Chris?
All right, and then I, I put in just some miscellaneous updates, uh. Uh. Yeah, this, I, you know, first one, Articulate River Woods, that's, it's good to see them moving ahead with that, because for a little while it looked like. Uh, we might not get the off-street parking that we want, but.
There's a certain irony in that, that was, uh. One of the, um, prioritization. Mine items on the, um. You know, the prioritization given of, of projects and initiatives, and, and, um. Uh, I remember what he does, then thinking, well, we can hold off on that for a while.
There's enough, we have enough, we have enough stuff.
Yeah, it's already.
The next thing, the next thing you hear is, oh, it's done, oh, okay, oh.
So, I, can you, I'm, I'm not clear on where this parking is, there's the inside meditation parking.
Yep, yep.
So is this across the street, or is this a large amount of lot?
No, no, it's across the street, down, down the street.
Okay, so it's down off the shoulder there, down to the flat there?
Uh, it's, uh. Actually, you know what, when I was out there with Michelle, I went, didn't you drive by, well? Didn't we see you down there?
Uh, I don't think so. This is when. Down there. Uh, who, in shape or what?
So, let's see, the, uh, yes, it's. Uh, generally around here.
Okay.
And it would be, I don't know if it's on this side or on this side, but it's, it's generally in this part of the property.
Okay, so you're pulling it off the road.
So, so, I wonder, of course, you're going to lose resolutions, you blow up, but, but there, there is a, uh, I think there's. Sort of a natural entry, um, where there's a, I believe there's a.
What a trail is?
There's, there's, there's a ditch on either side with an old. Some, you know, remnants of.
Is that what's shown there, the, the line down the middle of the project?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's a stone wall, maybe, maybe that's it. Or is that, is that drainage?
All right, Angus, the general.
Everybody knows that, that the Malan across the street from that, that large parcel that went to sale and sold. It was a funny little brown house, with one parcel they had out, and there was a large parcel. Uh, they claimed you could develop, and it was for sale, and then.
After the purchase.
Yeah.
Things happening, so.
I didn't know if that is a conservation of some sort, I don't know, developers going to be looking to build that.
Nice.
Uh, MBTA communities, since they're broadly in the reach for grant eligibility.
Okay.
Uh, MVP Action Grant, we've made a, a huge amount of progress on that, uh, in the last couple of weeks, and we've set the sign. Contract, we've, we've got some additional paperwork today, we're going to sign it later, but. They told us they're going to fast-track that, or the state signatures until we have an executed contract, we can't. Firm up a contract with, uh. With the itself, um. And, uh, we don't get, have a date, and when the state is going to make it, probably announce that of that grant. So we are eager to get that contract executed, so we can move forward.
Yeah.
Included, and we made the promise to appeal, and the, uh. They did the schedule for a couple of weeks out, uh, the Beaver.
Yeah, did you notice that the June twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, that she sent a phone one today, just, that was a, it was September, so she, uh.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of, uh, gratified to see that she's also had a history with the state, I thought it was just the local history, I can't remember what. What in there maybe. Um. I guess her complaining about the state that they haven't done anything. So I, I can't imagine she's going to get any traction with the D E P, what's Michelle and Paul's read on this?
Uh, I haven't, uh. I, I think they feel it's the right thing to do, what we're proposing to do, and. But that will all come out in the wash.
You know. Right.
And then, uh. Finally, I just put in this brief update that, uh, you know, we're, we're going to make sure that we. Uh, give the water department good advice on how much of the budget they need to cut over to. Uh, bring it into line with projected revenues.
So, on page, uh, last page two fifty.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-three following water and means on investments.
Yep.
Why is it so much higher than last year? Last year was two thousand.
Maybe we're in investments.
Yes, I guess twenty twenty was thirty-three thousand, it just seemed. Big jump.
Did they put more in, uh, was there more in stabilization, which is invested as opposed to. Retained earnings, which might be in a bank account, that is a big jump.
Yeah. Right.
Well, did I ask you, I'll put the question, why is it? Well, just to ask you, I'll put the question, why did it come from twenty, they know the twenty-one point?
Yeah.
And.
You're so smart.
You should be an orange. I think what they have is counter-investments. Things are good, they're bad. Things are bad.
Alright, I guess, is that it?
That's all right, yeah.
All your updates? Alright. Any items for future agendas?
Yeah.
Say now for moving.
On lane, signs need to get upgraded.
From the side?
After they put in the railing, a few weeks ago, we put the railing in, it says two-hole parking. There's no shoulder anymore. If you park cars.
Oh.
Against that guardrail, it's gonna be a problem. And super dented and they talked to him a while ago, he wanted, we're doing anything. And I said, hope so.
So this is our highway?
It's far lane, you know.
Yeah. Okay, but your, your, this.
Yeah, Chris, I mentioned it. I, I hadn't thought of what you had about it, but I'm sure once I do, I.
So what do the signs need to say?
Parking either side.
Oh. Okay.
That, that would be my impression. But the road is, if you park the car there, you're gonna have one lane of traffic. Right, and, and there's no shoulder, there's a tiny new shoulder on the other side, isn't there? Uh, usually most people go on in general, the, the building that will house the air and the old one.
So is this something the skateboard would decide since we're, we're in custody of the roads?
Uh, yeah, I mean, to me, it falls into the category of, I didn't say talk quick, have them get the sign again.
Right.
Consequences.
Yeah, well, it's just. I mean, I, I'm a professional, I must, you mentioned that and I just haven't thought of that.
No, no, I, I mean, we don't need to have a good thing without that.
Yeah, I think it's a, I don't think it'd be.
Or with the police, you could say.
Alright.
Will we, John?
Yeah, second. Well, David.
Hi.
Alright, because it's not eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve.
I know.